Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for being here this morning. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 20th, 2018 Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting, and we'll start with a flag salute led by Supervisor Montgomery. We're going to do the board member and county executive reports first in order this morning to free up some time. I think the county executive has a report for us?
Yeah. Supervisors, you're all aware, the devastating campfire in Butte County caused significant damage and death and destruction to the people in the town of Paradise. I want to let you know this because on October 14th, as a result of these fires, we received reports from a number of Placer County employees that were experiencing many health-related issues, respiratory-related, due to some of the air quality in our various county buildings caused by that unfortunate incident. Pursuant to my authority under the Placer County Code, I authorized department heads to allow employees that were having trouble breathing to leave early on the 14th and that the county would approve payment for their time through the remainder of the workday. This is a brief report pursuant to the code as required. Our Pollution Control District, in conjunction with the county health officer advising residents to stay indoors and limit their outdoor activities and their windows and doors remain closed. We also want to notify residents if they do have issues regarding this and up-to-date air quality standards. Our Air Pollution Control District at our website, www.placerair.org, can give you the latest information. But more importantly, I just wanted to share on behalf of myself, and I think our staff collectively, our prayers go out to the people in Paradise. And I was fortunate to take a tour of that a few weeks, a week and a half back, actually. And just really devastating. So, having said that, I also wanted to ask Chief Estes with CAL FIRE to come up and give a brief synopsis of the devastation and a little bit about what we're doing from Placer County's standpoint to assist in this effort.
Thank you, Todd. And good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Morning, Chief.
My name is Brian Estes. I'm the Deputy Chief of Operations for CAL FIRE in the Nevada Yuba Placer Unit, as well as the Placer County Fire Department. And I appreciate your time this morning. On behalf of our fire chief, George Morris, who will be, he's committed out of town right now, he will be here on December 4th to give a much more comprehensive briefing on the commitments from Placer County to the incidents around the state. But I wanted to just give everyone a brief update on a couple of things. The status of the two major fires in the state, the Woolsey and the Camp, and then briefly talk about our commitment in Placer County here, both state and local government resources to all these disasters, and kind of where we're at with a preparedness level. So, very quickly, the Woolsey fire, which looks much better than the campfire right now, both fires started on the 8th with heavy, heavy conditions, wind conditions and fire weather conditions. Obviously, the Woolsey in Southern California, Ventura, and into LA County was driven by strong Santa Anas, and the Camp was driven by our own phenomenon, as you know, more of a northeasterly phone wind that we see very commonly in the fall. The Woolsey fire started on 11/8 in Simi Valley in Ventura County. In that, within that first eight to 10 hours, it jumped the 101 and progressed all the way through Pepperdine and into the city of Malibu. Very devastating fire currently at 96,949 acres. It is 90%, 96% contained, which is positive, but they have destroyed 1,500 structures have been destroyed by the fire. One of the things I'll talk about in both of these instances, the importance of unified command that exists on both of these. And both of these incidents have unified command between law enforcement and fire agencies, which, in this day and age that we live in with massive evacuations and repopulations, is absolutely the only way to go. And I'll predicate that by saying that you're going to, you know, hear some accolades from a retired sheriff's office lieutenant here shortly, and he and his staff, under the support of Sheriff Bell, have been instrumental in this county, you know, having an aligned presence between the fire agencies and the sheriff's office and LE agencies. So, it's very, very important for us as a county moving forward. As we move up north into briefing on the campfire, which obviously has been the most devastating and the most deadly fire in California-recorded history, it also started on the 8th near Polga, in the Highway 70 area. You know, to put a little bit of a personal tone on it, there, I know there's a number of people that work in county government here that have relatives or potentially lived in the town of Paradise. Ironically, both Chief Morris and myself were born and raised in Paradise, and so we, we are like many, many other folks, public service providers that lived in around or grew up in Paradise that, you know, lost, for the most part, you know, the memories that you grew up with and everything that you knew as a sense of normality in your childhood and younger years is gone. So, it's very sobering and very much gives you a sense of reality. Positively, the fire is 70% contained at 151,373 acres. There are currently almost 40,000 citizens that are still displaced and evacuated in evacuation centers around the county. And as of this morning, there have been 17,157 structures that have been confirmed and destroyed. As you have seen, the fatality, the count for fatalities is approaching 80 now, and the list of missing persons is as high as 1,500. It's very difficult to say what that final number will rest at. Sheriff Honi, the sheriff of Butte County, is, you know, facing challenges that as a sheriff and dealing with the recovery efforts, I doubt many counties have ever had to face in California in this kind of situation. So, they're working diligently with FEMA and OES and the recovery efforts, but I predict that those numbers of fatalities will continue to increase over the next few weeks. So, I wanted to speak real briefly about Placer County and our commitment to the regional mission. CAL FIRE in Placer County currently still has 10 engines, one dozer, two crews, and 24 overhead personnel assigned to the incident. On the local government side, Placer County XPL, which is the west slope of local government, has two engines and four overhead. And XTB, which is the Tahoe Basin, still has five engines and eight overhead committed to these incidents. So, it truly is, the master mutual aid system in California is truly important and is working very well in this situation. And lastly, I will say that even though we have weather coming in the next two to three days, there still is a burn suspension in effect right now. Our prevention officers within the county have been very diligent in working to make sure people are still aware of that because our conditions right now are still very, very dry. We hope that that's going to change within the next 24 to 48 hours, and then we'll be able to reevaluate that for folks in the county. So, with that, I very much appreciate your time and be open to any questions you might have.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, I want to say thank you, and please pass all our heartfelt thanks along to your crews and all the other local special district crews that are out serving these communities. I know that Chief Morris lost his family home. I understand that you lost yours as well.
Yes.
And so, our condolences around that. I'm just grateful that no life was lost in either of your families.
Thank you, Supervisor.
I've been spending the last 10 years focused a lot on fire, and this has really brought it home to a lot of folks in the community. And there's a couple of things that I just wanted to touch on while we had the opportunity that I want us as a county to really focus on immediately because these are issues that are of concern certainly to all my constituents and to the constituents of all the districts. One of the issues that became clear is because the loss of infrastructure, phone lines, cell towers, there may well have been a significant number of people who weren't notified. I'm going to figure out how we quickly move back to mechanical redundant systems that can be implemented when we get a loss of infrastructure. And I'm talking about kind of the old-school sirens that we used to have in our communities. Doesn't communicate specific information, but should give people warning that something is going on that they need to pay attention to. We've got to stop relying upon technology so heavily. Related to that is we have, to my understanding, five different dispatches in Placer County. We need to get a consolidated dispatch. My understanding, again, is that there were individuals who were calling one dispatch, and it wasn't routed appropriately in some instances. And I think having a consolidated dispatch would go a long way to solving that problem. And then last, but certainly not least, I think our board needs to think about reallocating some dollars to roadside clearance. Here in the county, we need to, we do a good job, our road crews are out there, but we own the clearback about 10 feet from the road. Lot of people unfortunately were overcome by the fire on roads that had had clearances, but the intensity and the wind was just of such an unprecedented behavior that their vehicles caught on fire and they unfortunately perished. We need to take a really hard look at our own roads and our own evacuation routes and get going on pushing that back a lot farther than the 10 feet that we do right now from asphaltage. And so, just really am hopeful that everybody on this board will be on board with looking at those actions and moving on them as quickly as possible. But again, thank you. Just my heart goes out to everybody. It's just almost inconceivable.
Thank you, Supervisor. And I very much agree with all your points. And one of the things I think that Butte County did probably 15 or 17 years ago was they accessed because, because, you know, it's not truly one-way or one-way in and out, but for the most part, the Skyway is the main thoroughfare. And the Skyway, as you may know, at the very north end, kind of ended at a dirt road that went through to the small community of Butte Meadows, not so much unlike the community of Forest Hill in some ways, in that Forest Hill Divide at some point ends. And that county, through the help of the sheriff's office and the county fire department there, accessed funding to develop not only evacuation plans, but to improve the infrastructure and actually pave that evacuation route from the north end of Paradise all the way 13 miles to Butte Meadows. And I believe that the community north of Paradise, Paradise Pines or Magalia, as it's referred to, the reliance on that north-end evacuation route, which was only developed about 15 to 20 years ago, was critical in the preservation of life for those folks on the north end. South end's a different story, so.
Yeah, and I think in the case of Forest Hill, we do have a great paved road, but I think we just need to do better work around the flammable materials, both man-made and natural, around all our roads.
You bet.
Chief, on behalf of the board, please give our heartfelt thanks to all the firefighters and the deputies as well. I know some of those people have been working 24-hour shifts, and it's really a tremendous undertaking, and we just appreciate it so much. Please extend those thanks to all your people, I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Any other board member reports? We'll now go to our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the county executive department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote. Anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action, and the item may be removed for discussion. Mr. Leopold.
Yes, Supervisor Chair. One of the items we'd like to pull is item 19A. Otherwise, all the other items are consistent with moving forward.
19A for discussion?
Correct.
Okay, fine. Supervisor Euler?
23A, please.
Anyone in the public have a consent item that wishes to be drawn, withdrawn? Seeing none, I'll ask for approval of the remaining items.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Duran. Weigant. Euler. Montgomery. Holmes.
Yes. Now, we'll take up item 19A. Good morning, Ms. Featherstone.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Holmes, members of the board. Lauren Featherstone with the District Attorney's Office. So, for the fourth consecutive year, our office has been awarded funding from the Department of Insurance to investigate workers' compensation fraud. This grant provides funding for one investigator and 30% of one of the attorneys in our office. The grant agreement that was referenced in the resolution should now be attached in the board packet, and I'm here to answer any additional questions that you have.
Any questions? Supervisor Euler, did you have a question?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Any questions?
I have a question. When would the district attorney be available to give us a report on the programs?
I can relay back to the office, and I can get back to you with an answer.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Anyone in the audience wish to address us on this? Seeing none, we'll bring you back to the board for approval. It's been moved in second to approve item 19A. Workers' compensation, insurance fraud program grant award. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we will now move to item 23A.
Mr. Chairman, no report necessary on this from the sheriff's office. I appreciate, I know they're required on an annual basis to give us an update on the auto theft task force, but I really just want to take the opportunity to call out the fact that 11 years ago, our board was asked by then-Captain Rick Ward of the California Highway Patrol out of the Newcastle area to work with the sheriff's department and police agencies across Placer County to establish for the first time an auto theft task force. Our board's role in it was really having to cast a vote to add an additional $1 increment to vehicle registration fees in order to fund the auto theft task force. At the time, Supervisor Holmes, Weigant, and I were here, and we did that vote, and it was a subject of great controversy. We were taken to the woodshed over that $1, and I'm just more than pleased to call out every chance I get the tremendous work this task force does, this year having recovered almost $1.5 million in property on a $400,000 annual investment that we all collectively make by our additional $1. Insurance agencies rate us better because we have an auto theft task force in our area and because our recovery rates are so high and the arrest rates are so high of those who engage in auto theft in our area. So, just wanted to thank Sheriff Bell, knowing that he was going to be here today. Unfortunately, our CHP folks aren't here, but the continued leadership they've shown on our auto theft task force. And remind folks that tis the season for auto-related thefts, so don't be tempted to let your car warm in your driveway and leave all those prepackages out there. So, our folks are busy enough as it is without you creating your own bait cars. We don't need that. With that, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to recognize the good work done by these folks and move and pull the item.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to address us on this item? Seeing none? Is that a motion, Mr. Euler?
Yes, sir. Second.
It's been moved in second to approve item 23A. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Now, can I go to public comment? Okay. Now is the time for public comment. Persons may address the board on items not on this agenda. Please limit comments to three minutes per person since the time allotted for public comment is 15 minutes. And we have a full agenda today, so I am going to hold it to 15 minutes. If all comments cannot be heard within the 15-minute time limit, the public comment period will be taken up at the end of the regular session. The board is not permitted to take any action on items addressed under public comment. Mr. Cutler.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Brad the Cutler from Granite Bay. I just wanted to make a brief comment here today, here to object to the current methods that you have in use by the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Department to implement some of the wishes on the community. While I'm sure it represents wishes of some in the community, it negates input and silences those who wish to be heard, thus making kind of a mockery of our representative government. And I'm suggesting that the board maybe should consider revising the system to provide people a chance to be heard. You give lip service to it with this three-minute egg timer going. However, you don't allow equal time for equal presentations, and we witnessed that the last board meeting. So, we only get reactive comments upon which you guys can debate and comment, and we are submitted to silence. So, I feel that gives you a one-sided story because we're unable to give presentations and have our voices heard. So, as I said before, I've been elected official for many years, and we work without a gag order on people, and it worked very well. The system's been around another 150 years older than this body, but, and they've gone through, I'm sure, very similar circumstances as they ironed out how to do things better. Let me close by saying that the plaster democracy, as we've endured the last couple of years, I think falls short of Lincoln's references to government of the people, by the people, and for the people.
Thank you, sir. Morning, Mr. Biden.
Good morning, Supervisors. I hope you have a great Thanksgiving. That's my first start. And then, what I've done is, as Mr. Cutler noted, I've provided you, of course, a handout as I always do. And what I wanted to do was talk to you a little bit about last week's presentation. And so, what I put here is, I'm here for open, honest, and transparent government, as always, and that's why I keep coming. Because last week, we were given a presentation that I asked to be given before the meeting. I was not allowed to have that. I asked to make a presentation. I wasn't allowed to do that. Thank you. You did allow me three extra minutes, Supervisor Holmes. I appreciate that. But I wanted to point out some of the issues that I had with the decision and the evidence that you provided. First of all, the trail and the Loomis Basin Plan. I've got the Loomis Basin Plan. I read the Loomis Basin Plan. It doesn't talk about our trail. The IOD for roads that county council referenced, that we have plenty of IODs for roads that are not dedicated, did not mention trails, and she had indicated before we had met in Mr. Euler's office that wasn't the case. I also checked with Roseville, and Roseville does not have trails that they don't, that they're aware of, that do not have dedicated IODs. Approval of all conditions met by the county. We talked to Mr. Fisher right here. He conceded that a CSA was never formed, which was one of the many conditions of approval for that project. The development map, which you have here that shows inside your packet that you said vested and gave approval for that project, was later removed, and the quote was, "This conceptual," first of all, look at the circled part, "It is a conditional approval, not an approval." And the quote from planning staff was, at the time, "This was conceptual approval and did not constitute a final approval since the level of information submitted was very preliminary without sufficient detail to support a formal decision." Obviously not because we made a formal decision on it. The boss is not representing the county, the presidents of this county. You guys are merely limiting legal liability for the county. That is what I see. I worked in government in Roseville for seven years. I know how it works. That's what's going on here. You have the presentation two weeks before, you have meetings on it, you go through it, and then we get our three, six minutes, come up here to make a representative argument without seeing the information, and that's supposed to be fair to the public. I concede that it is not. Finally, the county refuses to recognize, why I'm still coming, the county refuses to recognize open space. This map shows how he's continued to expand and expand and expand. Confuses to recognize open space, and every few years, they allow Commissioner Moss to build more storage in violation of county codes. We've asked one question from the beginning that started this whole thing, and we have never had an answer. What is specific zoning ordinance used to justify the construction and operation of a mini-storage facility in a residentially-zoned area? Cannot get the answer. That's all we looked for, is that answer. You chastised us for suing you when you told us to sue you, and so we did. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Rude.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bart Rude, Premer Road, Auburn. I stand before you this morning to reemphasize the need for governmental recognition of the value of agriculture. And I know the county speaks to that a lot and says they support agriculture, but some of the action that I see doesn't speak to it so well. So, as you might understand, the ranching community surrounding 5345 Bell Road, the so-called Twilight Ride property, is a passionate community about the exclusion of urbanization of that particular area. And what we're really talking about is the extension of the trail system from Hidden Falls Regional Park into the area, the so-called Big Hill area, reaching clear to the Bear River. So, our collective desire is that the agriculturists in the area hope to enlighten and to educate each of you to the value of agriculture. We know that you are decision-makers, and we hope that you begin to see our side. And I would remind you that farmers are very few in number, while the Hoi Polloi, the rest of our community at large, are great in number. And I appeal to you to not get lost in the cacophony of the noise that those greater numbers of people will make. So, there are plenty of places where people can utilize trails where there'll be no disruption of agricultural neighborhoods. And it occurs to me that any support that you might individually or collectively, government-wide in Placer County, have for the extension of trails brings to mind the word accountability and the nexus of the word accountability with liability. And so should neighbor ranchers be put out of business as a result of these proposed trail developments? I foresee liability for the county. And that liability extends beyond just loss of ranching livelihoods. It could go into the problems associated with traffic, vandalism, and a whole plethora of other kinds of things that go along with what we have seen in the Mirs Road area. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good day.
Mr. Rude. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Judy Eisman. I'm part of the Steering Committee for Protect Rail Placer, and I'm here to talk about the Hidden Falls expansion as well as the Twilight Ride property. One of the items that I want to refer to today, and I'm not sure if you have read through it in its entirety, is the 196-page Trail Survey, the results. It's about two inches thick. After perusing that, there are a few items that, if you haven't looked at the whole thing, a couple pages that might be of interest to you, and you can find that on the Parks page under Documents, the Trail Survey Results. So, if we look at item five, Park and Trails, on page 22, it talks about open space and backcountry. And it's asking, this is the total number of the community in Placer County that was surveyed, and it asks you if there's far too little, somewhat too little, just the right amount, and don't know. And so, far too little of the individuals who replied, far too little, only 356. Under somewhat too little, 717. Under just the right amount, we have 1,091. So, right there, hmm, kind of looking at the measurements, it's evened out, so I'm not quite sure why we're rushing to have this expansion. If you look at item five, where it talks about T-scores, that's on page 40. And on a T-score, 50 is a measure of how much is enough. And so, those that are less than 50 are the ones that we're looking at, that we need more of. And not topping the scales is more parks, is more trails. Topping the scores is more rec centers, indoor recreation, so things like ice hockey, ice skating, maybe an indoor soccer. That would be great. Another one is paved pathways. We know expansion of Hidden Falls really isn't going to have paved pathways. Also, number three is the aquatic center. I think we have one down in Roseville-Rockland. Don't know of any others in the area, but an aquatic center is topping the scales, not an expansion of Hidden Falls. Page 41, how far will you travel to go hiking with your family and your household? Anywhere between 11-plus, 50-plus miles, so between 11 and 50-plus miles, people are willing to go. Not sure why we are looking at this expansion. Just wanted to let you know that on our protectrailplacer.com website, we have a petition which over 350 people have signed. Not everybody has access to the internet, so we also have hard copy signatures of over 250. So, we're looking at over 600 people that have signed against this expansion for Hidden Falls. We also have a survey of top five concerns. We have 13 items to pick, and you can pick five. And so, right now, traffic safety, fire safety, they're running neck and neck, and the next one is rezoning of agriculture property. Sorry about running over. Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Morning. Morning. My name is Lou Salatino. I've been a resident of Auburn for 30 years and North... I've been a resident of Auburn for 30 years, and North Auburn specifically, and we live within one mile of the proposed parking lot for Hidden Falls expansion. And we're just greatly concerned how much this is going to affect our neighborhood and the peaceful existence that we've enjoyed there. We understand that there might be rezoning coming into place to facilitate the Hidden Falls parking lot, and it doesn't seem like we're getting listened to. And so, as a citizen of North Auburn and within that area, we plead unto you to reconsider putting a parking area in that area that would be dangerous for our families and our ability to live a peaceful life. Thank you.
Thanks, Lou.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jean Piet, and I live at 5395 Bell Road. And I'm here about the Hidden Falls Twilight Ride property, which is going to be my next-door neighbor. And I was concerned, as the previous gentleman just stated, about zoning. But in the letter that I just sent to all of you and all of the others that you may have read, I did get a response from Lisa Carnahan in the Parks Department. And it was interesting to hear what she informed us about. The zoning text amendment heard by the Placer Commission on August 9, 2018, does not pertain to the trails' expansion project. So, you would not have been automatically noticed. I was complaining that you, none of you are keeping us informed. It is important to note, she goes on to say, that we are not requesting a change to the zoning for this project, as none is needed. I know that there has been some confusion in the community on this point, but please spread the word to your neighbors. We are definitely not asking for a change in zoning. Parks are an allowed use within the farm zoning with a minor use permit. And parking areas are an incidental use necessary for the use of parks. So, I don't think you have anything to say about it. I think they already have made a decision. And zoning doesn't have anything to do with it, based on what she's informed us about. That doesn't make any sense to those of us who are living on that property. I'd like you to consider what it is that you're dealing with and who it is that you're dealing with, who is in a position of power that is moving forward with the intention of doing whatever they want. You are going to be getting recommendations from all kinds of people. But I would like to ask that you put a little more thought into what it is that's going on. A lot of the people have been saying we are not being kept informed, and I agree with that. I know you have certain parameters you need to follow, but this is not helping us. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, hello there.
Hello. Tina Wilkins, Vina Castellano Winery, 4590 Bell Road. And I also live at 8220 Hubbard Road, in the area that everybody's been talking about. She kind of said everything I was going to say. So, I'll just say that if you guys could, you guys have the power, you're the only ones that have the power, to just kind of stop this Hidden Falls madness right now in its tracks and give agriculture a chance to grow and thrive. It has been growing and thriving leaps and bounds for the last 15 years. That's why we all know each other. Just if, do what you can to slow this down, because exactly what she said, the planning department is telling us that, no, there isn't going to be a zoning change, but in effect, that's what they're doing. They're changing the look of agriculture when you add this park in there, and we see that already at Mirs Road. So, I'm just asking you, do what you can right now to put a stop to this and give agriculture the chance to grow back how it once was. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. Okay, we're going to close public comment, and now move to... Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank folks for showing up around this issue. As probably most of you know, this was a split vote to move forward. And I just encourage you to keep reaching out to the supervisors who voted in favor of this and make your arguments. I think that's very effective. Wanted to offer a little glimmer of hope, which is, I have seen this board in the past say no to staff recommendations, and I think your efforts to convince the three board members who voted in favor of moving forward will be critically important if that is what's going to happen in the future. But thank you for your engagement. I appreciate it.
Supervisor Grant.
Yeah, no, and I would hope that staff would clarify some of the comments that were made today with regards to the information that's being moved out and to the community and to draw those distinctions, because it's not always common knowledge as to what a zoning change entails and what a by-right action entails. So, I think that's something that needs to be clarified, because certainly, when something is done by right, it's done by right. And it's already been, we've already had these discussions. Over at the board has already made policy, and, you know, there are some administrative things that happen. If it's not by right, then it is something that the board does have ultimate decision-making, policymaking power over. And I think those clarifications need to be made in this instance, so we don't have people coming forward thinking that it's all done, when it actually hasn't been done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Okay, again, I want to ask for everyone's patience while we move ahead with items 6A and 6B. This is a commendation for a couple of retiring sheriff's employees. The first one is this kid, John Kevin Borden. He's just a kid. How can you be retiring? Jeez.
I'm actually Kevin Borden right now. I'm 50.
Isn't Robert your grandpa?
Oh, that is...
For the record, no.
Oh, yeah, I see there is that one.
Yeah, right. Is it okay if I proceed, board members? In the matter of a commendation recognizing John Kevin Borden for 29 years of dedicated public service as an employee of the Placer County Sheriff's Office. Whereas Kevin Borden is retiring from the County of Placer Office of Sheriff after serving that agency and the citizens of this county for 29 years. And whereas Kevin began his employment as a deputy sheriff assigned to corrections and patrol, Deputy Borden relished his role in public safety and had a knack for reaching young people. From early in his career, Kevin was involved with the Sheriff's Ride and Ride with Pride program, mentoring kids and teaching them valuable life lessons. And whereas Kevin was promoted to the rank of sergeant, assigned to corrections, where he earned a reputation of being considerate of inmates and their families while maintaining order in the jail. Returning to patrol, Kevin was an effective supervisor and consistently responded to a high volume of calls. And whereas Sergeant Borden continued to rise through the ranks, he was promoted to lieutenant and assigned to the Sheriff's First Homeland Security Unit. He has also been a very effective watch commander and Office of Emergency Services Coordinator. Whereas Lieutenant Borden developed positive relationships with public safety partners in the region, Kevin was recognized for his response to the Oroville Dam spillway crisis in 2017, triaging the law enforcement needs of Buick County and providing immediate assistance. And whereas Lieutenant Borden's dedication to the Office of the Sheriff and to the citizens of the community has been exemplary. He has performed with professionalism and conscientious attention to duty throughout his career. Now, there, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer at a regular meeting, that's today, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, and acknowledged with great appreciation and the exceptional service of John Kevin Borden and wish him well in his retirement and future pursuits. So, congratulations. I'll bring this down here. And if you would like to say a few words?
I just, I'm not going to use the mic. I just really want to say thanks to the community. This is your community, and you allow us to work here, and we work for you. The Sheriff's Office is a great organization. You're our customers. You're a great sheriff, and we provide a great service, great career. Just nice to thank the public and the whole county. Law enforcement's under a tremendous amount of pressure right now. We have huge support of our county. And that's to our sheriff and our sheriff, and we're very, very fortunate and very honored. Thank you for those who showed up and matched my family and the reason. Thank you.
I just quickly want to thank Kevin as well, because gun and vest aside, he's one of the best huggers in the Sheriff's Department. And it's really been a pleasure to work with you.
I've appreciated all your efforts. Thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor.
Okay, now for our next commendation. I don't know if this guy's a kid or not, but he's certainly eligible for retirement. Mr. Brian Wigman. In the matter of a commendation recognizing Brian Wigman for 29 years of dedicated public service as an employee of the Placer County Sheriff's Office, whereas Brian Wiggum is retiring from the Placer County Sheriff's Office after serving that agency and the citizens of the county for 29 years. And whereas Brian began his employment as a deputy sheriff assigned to corrections and later held assignments in patrol and investigations. And whereas Deputy Wigman, Wiggum, continued to develop professionally and was promoted to the rank of sergeant at the North Lake Tahoe Station, where Brian connected with members of the community, law enforcement partners, and his team members. And whereas Sergeant Wiggum held a long-term assignment as detective sergeant of the Property Crimes Unit, he was a driving force in securing grant funding to implement a electronic tracking system, a successful tool in apprehending suspects of property crimes. And whereas Brian held extra assignments throughout his career as an explorer post-adviser, special enforcement team member, field training officer supervisor, and chaplaincy board member and liaison, demonstrating a strong sense of teamwork and his desire to be an effective and productive member of the Sheriff's Office. And whereas Sergeant Wiggum's dedication to the Office of the Sheriff and to the citizens of the community has been exemplary. He has performed with professionalism and conscientious attention to duty throughout his career. Now, therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer at a regular meeting held November 20, 2018, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, and acknowledged with great appreciation the exceptional service of Brian Wiggum and wish him well in his retirement and future pursuits. Congratulations.
Appreciate it. You're seeing it? I'd say thank you very much for a great career in the Placer County Sheriff's Office. Really blessed. Thank you for my family being here. They're just back home as far as support through 29 years of service. Community is great, and I'm just very thankful for my community here in all the more we live. And I just think the Sheriff's Office, like Sheriff Bell, for just that great career as far as being part of the team and family.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board on this item? Commendations? Seeing none? Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you all for being here, for his support, their support. And now, we'll go to our 9:05 timed item. This is Health and Human Services presentation recognizing the Health and Human Services Department for awards received from the California State Association of Counties and the National Association of Counties. Mr. Brown.
Good morning, Chair Holmes, members of the board. Jeff Brown, your Health and Human Services Director. It's my distinct pleasure this morning to introduce to you Mr. Manuel Rivas, CSAC's Deputy Executive Director for Operations and Member Services. Prior to his current position, Mr. Rivas worked over 26 years with Los Angeles County, including 10 years in senior management, and the last four years as the county's Assistant Chief Executive Officer overseeing policy development, legislative affairs, and intergovernmental relations at the state and federal level. Mr. Rivas is here with us this morning, along with Farah McDade Ting, Health Services Legislative Representative, to share CSAC's recognition of five of our trend-setting Health and Human Service programs. Before turning this item over to Mr. Rivas, I would just like to thank the board for your unwavering support for our programs. And I'd also like to thank our staff for never resting on their laurels and continuing to seek out better ways to provide service to our residents. It's really their efforts that work to create a high-achieving organization and ultimately healthier communities within our county. So, I'll turn over the mic to Mr. Rivas.
Good morning, Mr. Rivas.
Good morning. Wow, that was a very nice introduction. I'm very happy to be here. Thank you for having me, Chairman Holmes, Board of Supervisors. It's truly a pleasure to get an opportunity to get out to your county, and I would get an opportunity to actually breathe some fresh air. But more important, really recognize the innovative efforts by your county. You guys should be very proud of all the staff work that goes into some of your programs. I was very impressed. So, I have a couple of presentations. We're going to do also a couple of videos highlighting the two awards that received the Challenge Award, which is one of our highest honors at CSAC. Also, on behalf of Graham Canales, our Executive Director and former Placer County employee, he sends his regards and also his congratulations. It has been a challenging year this past year, yet very successful. In Sacramento, your CSAC legislative team continues to advocate to advance the priorities of counties and also to protect your interests. Among the various achievements that we had this past year, CSAC was very involved in the passage of a billion-dollar Wi-Fi prevention package that the governor just signed into law. Also, we were able to advocate for a package of $700 million for homeless services. It's the first of its kind investment by the state, and this is money that is going to be able to be used by all counties to address homelessness. Today, though, we don't want to talk about CSAC or what's going on in Sacramento. We really want to commend you and talk about the great innovative programs that you guys have here in your county. This year, we had a total of 267 entries statewide for the Challenge Award Program. Of that, 17 programs were selected for Challenge Awards and another 36 for Merit Awards. Your county received five awards, so you guys got about 10% of all the awards. Your county received five awards, so you guys got about 10% of all the awards. The first program that I want to recognize is the Whole Person Care Pilot Program that received a Challenge Award. Placer County was one of 18 counties initially approved by the state to implement a five-year pilot. The Whole Person Care Program is aimed at high-risk homelessness, particularly for frequent users of emergency rooms, hospital beds, and your jail facilities. In the first 18 months of operation, the program has housed more than 18 individuals and also served over 240 clients. Many of those suffer from severe medical needs. The Whole Person Care Program also helped purchase the permanent supportive housing for this population with the help of a Sutter Health Foundation grant. The Sutter Health Foundation is a great partner among the others that your county has partnered with throughout the county. A key goal to the success of this program was the development of strong partnerships with a multitude of local entities, including your law enforcement, hospitals, homeless shelters, and mental health providers. The program significantly improved data information sharing between service providers, including a digital platform called PreManage that sends real-time alerts to case managers when their clients reach the emergency room. These partnerships ensure that everyone is on the same page when it comes to providing effective services. In the video that you're about to see, you're going to hear staff actually talk about the benefits of the program, and also you will hear from Carly, who is one of the clients that has benefited from this program. So if you can, please play the video, please.
My name is Carleen, and I had several hiccups in my life that made me lose my job and eventually become homeless, was diagnosed with agoraphobia. One year ago, I was in a shelter, kind of curled up on my bed, just not wanting to deal with people, and going to appointments only because I had to. Was fortunate enough to become a recipient of Whole Person Care in the county, and got me off of living on the streets and out of a shelter, and got me clean and sober, and in a home, an actual home, which is really nice. It sure beats a shelter in the street.
Carly was able to move into a house that was purchased from funds from Sutter Health Foundation, and the home is run by Ami, so those are a couple of our very important partners that we have in Whole Person Care, and we have several partners that we work with. That's part of what Whole Person Care wanted to do, was to bring together various agencies that provide a lot of different services and help clients that have a lot of needs be able to work through these diverse systems and these siloed systems so that people could get all of the help they need. We've been able to house people that a lot of folks thought would never get housed, it just wasn't going to happen, and sometimes it took a while, but it's happened and it's been successful, and you know, it's a testament to the collaborations and to the staff.
They know what they're doing, they know how to get you out of this mess, they can get you to your appointments, to get you well, if it's a mental health issue, or a physical issue, or whatever, they know the steps to take to get you well, and it's just huge. I didn't know where to start, where to go, they just led me along, and I listened to them.
The difficulties that my clients face, along with homelessness, is can be mental health issues or substance use issues, so addressing all of their various issues and then creating a plan where we can get them not only to accomplish their goals and into housing, but also so they can be successful in having a stable, stable future.
Across the board, providing services, getting someone housed, is a lot less expensive than constantly going to the emergency room, taking up space at the hospital, going to the jail, having interactions with law enforcement on the street, going into mental health emergencies, those are all high-cost services that good preventive services can really help with.
The Whole Person Care has been a great opportunity over the last few years to really come together in different partnerships and to innovate to better serve our target population of people experiencing homelessness in Placer County. We've had some really good results in the pilot for the first two years, and really, really look forward to working with our partners to see what we can take forward in the future.
I would not be here without them, I know that, and now I have a roof over my head and able to pay rent because I have an income now.
Carly's currently working as an in-home supportive services worker, she provides services to a elderly client of ours.
I worked really hard this last year, I'm in the process of taking some business classes to refresh my skills, and then look for a full-time job and get back into society, and yeah, and help people that have been through what I've been through, that's important to me.
Very nice. So, really, congratulations for having such an innovative program, you know, it's, like I said, it's just a pleasure to be able to be part of this and recognize your county for that. The next award is the Safe Drinking Water Program. This is a forum that was a very unique step, event, established last year to bring water regulators and operators from across the state for four days of training, open discussion, in-depth learning, and around safe drinking water. Your county partnered with the American Water Works Association to design and implement a training program through a funding, through funding that was provided by the state. Drinking water regulations are becoming more complex, same thing with technologies becoming more advanced, and having a forum where it allowed for professional development and bringing all these key stakeholders together was very important. This event was the first of its kind and is planned to continue annually for the benefit of counties across the state. Your county did take the lead in actually trying to convene this event, and it was very well-received. I know counties as far down as Kern County and Los Angeles County were very pleased to actually be participating in this worthwhile event. We're going to show you another very short video that talks, that will highlight what happened during the first year of the event, which is 2017, and highlights the value of the county regulators developing, working close relationships with operators and industry professionals. The video, please.
In 2014, every environmental health department in California received some funding from California Department of Public Health for their safe drinking water programs, their local drinking water programs, to get them into compliance. Placer County was already in compliance with all of that, so we decided to do something else with our funding. Our goal was to develop a workshop for both the operators and the regulators, the drinking water workshop, to provide safe drinking water to our communities. So we thought big, we tried to do something really unique, we contacted the best experts in the country, in the nation, with the American Water Works Association, to have them specifically design a training for that purpose, not just for Placer County, but for the entire state of California. So that vision became a reality, and we got together with over 100 different regulators and operators in four days in October, one of the most beautiful places in the world, to learn from each other's different perspectives.
We're out here today at beautiful Squaw Valley for a water system tour as part of our drinking water workshop that we've organized. This is a training event for both regulators and those who work in the drinking water industries. We've got people all throughout California here, as far down as Los Angeles County and San Bernardino County.
Talking about groundwater, different things within the cross-connection control program, backflow prevention, just some processes on treating water and, you know, how to move water in a safe way.
A lot of the topics that have been covered in the training and the continuing education seminar here at Squaw Valley this week, those building blocks can be used to solve for some pretty challenging, you know, problems and conditions, and so, again, we're thrilled to be able to show the broader water quality folks that are here in attendance at this conference, real-world application.
Good opportunity for some of my staff and I to come up and participate and get refreshed on everything new that's coming up, and enjoy the scenery also.
Really, we're all here for the same cause, to support safe drinking water, so being able to kind of have everyone in the room and share how can the regulators help the industry, and how can the industry work with the regulators, and we're all here for the same cause, so it's just really unique.
It's one of the best conferences I've been to, because of the collaborative aspect of it. When you go to just an operator CE type of a conference, it's pretty cut and dry, but in a situation like this one, you get, you get both sides of the picture.
It just shows when you have a commitment to do it, and you have the partnership that you have between the regulator and, you know, the system, you can accomplish a lot of really good things.
The end benefit is our customers, are the public who we are here to serve and protect.
Safe drinking water!
Very nice.
Okay, and last but not least, I also wanted to make a mention of the three Merit Awards that your county also received. The first one is the Get Higher Collaborative Workshops for Job Readiness. Partnering with the Placer School for Adults and other local agencies, your county helped consolidate and offer free classes and education workshops to local job seekers to prepare them for industry jobs. A true one-stop-career center was created, offering job preparation, assistance, placements for all job seekers, and a series of 25 unique workshops are now offered at no cost to the individuals that are participating in the program. The result is an increasing number of Placer County residents are being served and benefiting from this collaborative effort. The next program is the Children's System of Care Implementation of Safety Organized Practice. The Children's System of Care Implementation of the Safety Organized Practice has been successful in keeping children safely in their homes. The practice utilizes a unique approach for child welfare that seeks to strengthen support around the child and their family. And the last award for merit is the Emergency and Homeless Shelter Alternative Food Program. Placer County environmental health staff work very closely with local churches, nonprofits, faith-based organizations, to assess their ability to ensure kitchen safety for mass food production for homeless individuals, and also for shelters in the event of emergency incidents. So that, having said that, congratulations to your board, to Placer County for your five awards. If you would like to, we can do a presentation and picture with the staff.
Sure. Are we down there, is that it?
Yes.
Supervisor Uglary, you have a comment?
I do have a comment, before everybody runs away, I just want to say for over two decades now, our Health and Human Services Department has really been an incredible center of innovation, and the folks within AHHS not only take their jobs of serving the public, meaning those people who directly need their services, take that job very seriously, but they take the job of being stewards of the taxpayer very seriously, and they're constantly looking for ways to innovate and deliver greater benefit for fewer dollars, and so, want to thank you for your constant work in driving that message through the staff, the staff for their amazing work in seeing opportunity and pursuing it, and the wonderful recognition that this represents from the state. One suggestion I might make, though, in the future, just to make your clean drinking water thing a little faster, you hold it in Tahoe, you hand them a cup, you say, "There's the lake." You're pretty much done at that point, so, thank you very much for your wonderful work for you and your department.
Thank you. But wait, there's more. Now we have the NACO Achievement Awards. The first four programs mentioned above are also receiving 2018 NACO Achievement Awards.
Supervisor Holmes, I think we're going to save those for a later date.
Okay.
Since we realized we had only so much time this morning.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, we will now move to our 9:20 timed item. Community Development Resource Agency, continue a public hearing to consider the appeal filed by Christie Dawn on behalf of FTCRA LLC. Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, I am Patrick Dobbs from the Planning Services Division, and you'll recall, this next item is a continuance of the September 25th Board of Supervisors Hearing to Consider An Appeal Filed by Christie Dawn on behalf of FTCRA Limited Liability Company. This is an appeal of the Planning Commission and Zoning Administrator's previous actions to deny the variances requested for three unpermitted structures. The property is located at 10385 Atwood Road, near the DeWitt Government Center in North Auburn, Mr. Chairman, it's in your District III. The picture on the right here, I've highlighted in yellow, the three existing as-built improvements that are the subject, or that were the subject of the initial appeal. There is the 898-square-foot, single-story covered patio that has attached the existing single-family dwelling approximately seven feet from the east property line. This photo shows the 30-foot-by-30-foot, two-story second dwelling unit above the detached garage, the structure is currently 14 and a half feet from the east property line. And finally, there was an eight-foot-tall privacy fence along Atwood Road where three feet is the maximum height for solid fences within the front setback. Your board first heard this appeal on September 25th, you decided to take separate actions on each of the variances requested, you denied the variance for the additional fence height and deferred action, and granted a continuance on the variance for the covered patio and detached second unit, to see if a couple of additional months would provide sufficient time for staff and the appellant to develop solutions to regarding the remaining two violations. On October 17th, we met with the appellant and their contractor to discuss the previous September hearing, they've got a new proposal, this includes getting or obtaining the necessary building permits to first, let's see, on the left-hand slide, this upper red box, they are proposing to jack up the detached garage structure, put it on rollers and roll it approximately 15 feet, so that it will comply with all setbacks, they're proposing to remove the plumbing and cooking facilities and convert the upstairs into non-habitable accessory area. Second, the covered patio down here in the lower red box, based on testimony given at the previous hearing, they are proposing to keep that patio in its current location and configuration. The photo in the lower right-hand side was taken last week, this is showing the fence being reconstructed to a height of three feet, the appellant wanted to make sure that they came to today's hearing, and were able to demonstrate to you their responsiveness to your direction. We have two options of findings for your consideration today. This current proposal has reduced the required or requested variances to really just one item, and that was not previously considered by the Planning Commission or the Zoning Administrator, both of those hearing bodies took action to deny the variances in whole, and if you two wish to deny the remaining variances, we recommend option one. Staff believes the updated proposal is consistent with your direction from September 25th. Staff believes the updated proposal is consistent with your direction from September 25th. If you find the appellant's proposal acceptable, we recommend option two, and that you take the following three actions. To continue the appeal hearing for the covered patio and direct staff to return to a future board meeting with conditions of approval and sequel clearance for the variance for the covered patio. Second, to deny the appeal filed by FTCRA LLC for the variance for the second dwelling unit and detached garage structure. And finally, to uphold the Planning Commission's action to deny the appeal and uphold the zoning administrator's decision to deny the variances for the second dwelling unit and detached garage structure, supported by the findings contained in the staff report. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can answer your questions.
All right. Thank you. Any comments, questions from board members? Supervisor Montgomery?
Just looking for clarification. How would option two, if this board should decide to go with option two, how would it respond to the proposal that they lift the secondary dwelling unit, move it 15 feet, and disconnect all the utility services?
Thank you for the question, Supervisor Montgomery. By denying the appeal for the second dwelling unit and detached garage structure, you're remitting that back to the code compliance, and our code compliance officer will work with the applicant to get the necessary permits to relocate that structure and address the remaining plumbing, et cetera.
So that would be, I'm just going to use the word implied, in option two?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Grant?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to follow up real quickly on that. So it's not necessarily implied, it's just by denying their appeal to let it stay, they have to go back to whatever we negotiated.
Yes, sir, just like you did with the fence. That has been returned to code compliance, and they will work to ensure that violation is completely remedied.
And with regards to the pergola, we would just say, okay, we'll get you into code compliance on that one.
You have options in terms of the timing in which you may want to continue that to a future hearing? And as staff, we'd appreciate any direction from you regarding the justification for the variance.
I don't have a problem with that. I would just want a clarification. And, you know, the only other thing that I'm going to say is that, you know, our codes, our conditions, and those kinds of things, they're really not into be, you know, not to get in your business. You know, we understand you're property owners, you have certain rights, but it's basically so we can all live together and feel safe and have our space and make sure that we're not tripping over each other, and that's really what it's all about. Hopefully, in the future, anybody that's out there that's watching this will understand that, you know, there's a big responsibility as a landowner to make sure that, you know, you comply with the county codes. Otherwise, you know, a situation like this will occur, and moving forward, I'm not so sure that the board is going to be so happy to help folks that don't follow the code. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. Any other comments from boards, board members? Sehnan, did you have something to add? Okay. All right. We all open it up to the public. Anyone here to speak to this item?
Morning.
Morning.
I'm Rick Ladd. I'm the contractor on the job. Just wanted to come up and let it be known that we have applied to everything that you guys asked us to do. We cut the fence, we have proposed plans, we've got engineered stamped trusts, it's foundation, everything ready to go. And just like to, if we could still, you know, like we were here from the beginning, to ask for the variance on the building would be lovely. If not, then we plan to move it and comply to code.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All righty, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. What is the decision? What is the...
Mr. Chairman, traditionally, someone else makes the motion on this, but since this is in your district, I'm wondering if you would like to share with us your perspective.
Well, quite frankly, there's been a pattern of behavior of this project for the last two years, and there's been no resolution. They've been notified that stop work orders, to stop work, and they continued to work. They built the fence and when they were warned not to. I'm not, I'm not willing to grant a variance. I just intend to uphold the Planning Commission's denial of the appeal. So does anybody... Oh, Kirk.
Does that mean, I'm confused, does that mean number one or option two?
I would go for number one. Supervisor Yuler, you talk. No? All right. Any other comments? Well, the board will here undertake a motion.
I'm going to go with option two. You know, I think our overall, what we as a board would like to do is like to get people in compliance. Yeah, we had a lot of problems here, but I think once we were able to get, wrap our head around those problems, the owner did work with the county to get their situation straightened up with our code enforcement. So I would be, I would think number two would be, you know, would be good. I'm good with that.
And I will second that, and if I may add, I understand the chairman's frustration, and it's certainly not the intent of this board to make life easy for scofflaws as people move through our process. And yet, certainly having to abandon the functionality of the second story and move that structure, that's not a cheap endeavor. So I think there is probably commensurate pain caused and received by the applicants, both as they went through the process and ignoring what the county was saying, but now having to comply with the county's proposed remedy. So I'm comfortable that the proverbial punishment fits the crime in this case.
Any other comments? I'm not going to support the motion. We're opening up a slippery slope. Let people develop, and then if they don't follow the rules, they come back for forgiveness, and it's not the right way to go. And we're just opening up the door for other people to go ahead and do this and come forward and ask for forgiveness. So I'm not going to support the motion.
And out of deference to Chairman Holmes, I'll be voting in alignment with his vote today.
All right. Any more comments from the board? Well, there's a motion and a second to go with option two. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Duran?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Yuler?
Hi.
Montgomery?
No.
Holmes?
No. All right.
Before we move on, we need to then set a date to bring this back for the variance findings, SEQA clearance, et cetera.
Do we want to bring it back on the next meeting, or do we need more time?
How much time do you put in?
Either December 18th or January 18th.
December 18th. Well, we got a full schedule on December 18th.
It'd be December 8th, I believe, would be the next.
December 4th.
Mr. Chairman, given, I would think, the nature of this ongoing hearing, it is important that we get it in while this current board sits. So even if we are booked on one or the other, I think we need to hear this while this board sits.
18th. That meeting will be held in Roseville.
That's sufficient.
At the grounds.
Correct, in Roseville.
Formerly known as the Placer County Fairgrounds. Time served.
12:45?
When is it?
12:45.
12:45?
In the afternoon on the 18th.
On the 18th of December at the board meeting in the grounds formerly known as the Placer County Fairgrounds. Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. We will now move to our 9:45 timed item, Presentation Sixth Annual Placer Creates Employee Art Show, presented by Wendy Williams.
Good morning, Chairman Holmes, members of the board. It's my pleasure today to tell you about the Placer Creates Employee Art Show, which began today and will run through February. We'll have employee artwork that will be displayed at six different county buildings, ranging from out in Tahoe all the way down to Rockland. Just some really tremendous pieces that come from our county artists. And if you'll walk outside the building today, make sure you check out the hallway because it's already adorned with a sneak peek at what you can expect to see at the other facilities. Before we tell you about the artwork, I did want to recognize the committee members because they're county employees that are members of various departments, so it's cross-departmental, this engagement team. From Administrative Services, we have April Pay. From the county executive offices, we have Susie Lauderdale and Chris Gray Garcia, myself. From the Health and Human Services, this is where we get the lion's share, we have Diane Cato, Donna Holman, Gina Geisler, Kristi Valech, Victoria Pacheco, and Adrian Taylor. So to your point, Supervisor Yuler, there is a lot of service that does come out of Health and Human Services. I would like to tell you all about the art show, but reality is, my stick figures are subpar. So I'm going to call Donna Holman up, and also a couple of the artists who are in the show, and she's going to talk to the actual event.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's very humbling to be here after listening to the devastation going on, and we appreciate your time focusing also on the arts. And Christie here has made this glass box herself. She slaughtered, and it has a hinge, and it's a beautiful piece. And Susie and her daughter made this mask, and this is one of Diane Cato's paintings, her watercolors. And Diane has several pieces in the show this time, and they're all very nice. And I do agree with Wendy that if you just tour the hallways here, you'll see some great art already up. And the hope is that it gives you a moment to, you, the public, and our employees, to just step back for a second and maybe think about something else instead of, you know, whatever is stressful at the moment and whatever's going on, and maybe inspire you to try something on your own. And along those lines, we do have collaborative pieces each show. And I'm going off topic of my speech, but I think that's all right. Yeah, I think the excitement in the collaborative pieces, we had, I believe, 18 people, 19 people in the previous show, and in this show, we have about 15 down at the Sunset Building, is the amount of energy from the families. So it's not just the artists doing work. Some of the people take it home, and their children help paint, which you see she helped make the mask. And it's inspiring that team bonding and family bonding time, and the excitement of the employee when they see their artwork up and hear from the public commenting on it. And on our last collaborative piece, there was a big elephant, and as I was walking through, I watched a mother engage her teenage son out of a chair, playing his video game. And she said, "Come on, check out this art. You do artwork. You should see this." And he begrudgingly got up, but I just, I didn't, you know, want to be too excited, but I was beaming inside because I thought, "This is what it's about, having children of my own that play video games when they were younger." So, but I just really enjoy, and I know the team really enjoys this engagement and giving people the opportunity to take that time to enjoy something else going on. We have 43 artists with over 60 pieces of artwork, and we have wood carvings, sculptures, and string art on nails on wood, acrylic flowtraw pour on canvas. And we have another mask besides this one, and I believe it's about four feet wide, and that is either in Cedra or the Fab buildings. And we also have exceptional photography work and paintings. And doing all this helps us build, gain confidence, and it can be applied towards our group, I'm sorry, our personal and professional lives. And for some of us, this is the first time we've shared our artwork, and some of them have never painted before, and people are painting and sharing it, which is really hard to do, but it just shows that people are willing to do that. And it just fosters a sense of community. And I could say that the string art down at the Rockland show, there were about 15 contributors, and they all sat during lunch out on a metal picnic table pounding nails and two boards, laughing. And it's, each one did an individual bird or multiple birds, and it's hanging on by a string, it's basically, and Birds of a Feather, and that's Employment Services and Cal Works put that together. In the locations, we have six locations. We have the Tahoe City Library and the Tahoe Administrative Building. And in Auburn, as you might be aware while you're waiting outside, we have our artwork here in the domes. And the Community Development Resource Center, and also the Finance Administration Building, which I referred to as Fab earlier, and also at the Sunset Building in Rockland. And we hope that you, the public, and our fellow employees will enjoy the artwork, and please feel free, if you ever want to contribute some of your own artwork, please look us up, and we'd be happy to showcase it with you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
So I would like to reiterate that today's reception starts at 4:30 to 6:00 at the Community Development Resource Center, and you can meet some of the artists. There'll be some light refreshments. And I'd just like to close by thanking the board and also the department directors for supporting Placer Creates and the Employee Art Show because it really does promote engagement. Engagement promotes collaboration across departments. It promotes that team spirit. Ultimately, it makes us a stronger county. It helps us to break down those silos, and I just, I'm really impressed with this group, and I look forward to working with them in the future. It's a real honor to work with them. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm really impressed with all the artwork that's been over the years. It's unbelievable how many talented people we have in our employ. Thank you so much. And Supervisor Montgomery?
I just have a question for Susie. Is that the Egyptian god set, or inspired by?
Anubis.
Anubis.
It was for her history class.
Thank you. I was, I knew I recognized it from Egyptian history, but could not put the appropriate Egyptian god to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to our 10 o'clock timed item, Community Development Resource Agency Amendments to Placer County Code Chapter 17 Zoting Ordinance. This is a public hearing to consider the Planning Commission's recommendations to amend the Placer County Code Chapter 17 Zoting Ordinance.
Good morning. EJ Valdi with Planning Services Division. While George is getting ready, he'll be presenting this item to you. This went to the Planning Commission back in both July, continued to August, and I'll let George take it from here.
Guys are moving too fast for me this morning. Sorry. Lots of hay.
Mr. Chair, before we begin the presentation, I would like to request that we defer this item to a future date. I have not personally had the time to read through the 300-plus pages and would prefer the opportunity to have done that and have any questions that might arise out of that asked and answered before we get to a public hearing on this. I don't know what the rest of the board feels, but I don't feel prepared to address this today.
Okay. I have no objection. I see Supervisor Yuler left the room. I don't know what...
It's my understanding that the majority of what we're talking about here is basically housekeeping, right? I mean, there's nothing controversial in the least.
The only thing that would be something that I wouldn't consider classically housekeeping would be the addition of the street-side setback.
Okay.
Other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
What kind of a delay?
How long of a delay would you like, Jennifer?
I'm going to be absent on the 4th, so it would be the 18th.
The earliest. So it's, I mean, you guys...
The reason why I'm asking is I think it's one of the items that Supervisor Duran ought to hear, too, since we started it. So if we could get it in on that last date, I know we...
We'll just all get rooms in Roseville.
Right before Christmas.
Not together. So we're clear.
Make sure they have a bar.
Duly noted.
So are you okay with the...
Yeah, if you can get it on the, by the end of the year, I think that's important.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. We will defer this, we will defer this item till...
Plan a big lunch.
Yeah.
A long one.
And dinner.
Yeah. All righty.
We can put it on the 18th as 2:00.
2:00 on December 18th at the grounds formerly known as the Placer County Fairgrounds. See you on the 18th. See you on the 18th. Yeah. Hey, thanks for coming. Hey, thanks for coming. So, we're going to continue the public hearing, correct?
We never.
Oh, I never did. Yeah, okay, good. All right. Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll move to our ten forty-five timed item, County Executive, Placer Gold Industrial Park, Phase One. Who's?
We're early, Jim.
Huh? Oh, we're early. Thanks for keeping me on track. All right, so now.
We're going to go to Admin Services.
All right, thank you. Okay. Department Item Seven, Admin Services Ordinance Amendment to Article Four Sixteen of the Transient Occupancy Tax Code.
Oh, sorry. Yes, sir. Good morning Chairman Holmes and members of the board. My name's Doug Jastro. I am the Revenue Services Manager for the Administrative Services Department, and the item before you today concerns the introduction of the Transient Occupancy Tax Ordinance with amendments that will clarify existing language and also improve procedures to ensure the effective administration of the TOT program. The ordinance, the TOT ordinance, was last updated in 2013, and the Administrative Services Department, along with members of County Council, the County Executive Office, and the Auditor Controller's Office, have worked to identify and address areas that was in need of revision. And, let's see. Okay. So, we've spent a lot of time in the past few months reaching out to operators and consulting with other jurisdictions to refine and improve the proposed changes. On October twenty-third, we presented our proposal with amendments to your board and received direction on specific items, along with additional input from the community and operators. The three main points that we received direction on on October twenty-third was the definition of managing agent, local contact information, as well as the appeal process. And those are the three items that I'll be talking to you today about. On October twenty-third in Tahoe, Supervisor Duran requested the inclusion of online vacation rentals to the ordinance, that they should be acknowledged and included, and we have done so under the definition of managing agent. Managing agent means the third party who is not the owner of the hotel, but who acts as an operator on behalf of the owner. A managing agent includes property management companies, online platforms, and any other person or entity acting on the owner's behalf. So, online platforms who act on the owner's behalf will be considered the managing agent and shall have the same duties and liabilities as the owner would under the TOT ordinance. The language is specific in order to encompass all three hundred online platforms and not call out a specific company. The second item that was discussed at the October twenty-third meeting was local contact information. In the ordinance update, we are asking for operators to designate a local contact person with authority and access to manage the unit. The operator must provide local contact information to the tax administrator with some exceptions. If the operator resides within fifty miles of the unit, they may designate themselves as the local contact, and a hotel with a full-time front desk staff may designate itself as the local contact. And finally, if the local contact is temporarily unavailable, a backup local contact would be provided, the information would be provided to the tax administrator. Now, when we spoke on the twenty-third and received direction from the board, there was a bit of discussion that centered around the idea that the local contact information would need to be valuable in the fact that it would, something that can be acted on immediately. And so, we discussed various options to provide that immediate response through the local contact information. And basically, the idea that we've come across is not to modify the ordinance in any way, but a technological solution to it, which is a twenty-four-hour local hotline for residents to contact when there is any kind of disturbance or complaint in their neighborhood. Basically, how that works, it's a line that's administered by Revenue Services through one of our vendors. It's a local contact number. It's an automated service. When someone calls to make a complaint or to indicate that there's some kind of code violation, that the service would be able to access a database of the local contact information and make an immediate call to that local contact to resolve the situation. The automated system would then call back the original caller and ask, after a certain amount of time, if the issue has been resolved. If it has, then we move on. If it hasn't, then the automated system would escalate the call to the appropriate agency, sheriff, code enforcement on that to resolve the situation. And then, at the end of the day, Revenue Services would receive an activity report showing which properties were receiving complaint calls, and so we can act on that as we move forward. So, we believe that this would resolve the issue of facilitating an immediate response to complaints in the area. The third item that was discussed on October twenty-third was regarding the appeal process, and the direction that we received was twofold. One, we were introducing originally to have an independent hearing officer in order to create a degree of independence for the process when there is a tax determination appeal. But there was also a consensus amongst your board that we maintain the Board of Supervisors as the ultimate and final administrative appeal for these situations. So, the four, or the existing ordinance that we have now is on an appeal that the first level would go to the Director of Administrative Services. If that was questioned by the appellate, it would go to the County Executive Officer for a hearing, and then finally to the Board of Supervisors. As we are proposing now, the appeal process would be initiated with the County Executive Officer or designee. The difference there is that there's a restructuring of the Administrative Services Department, so we won't necessarily have a Director of Administrative Services, that's more just housekeeping on that part. The second level would be the retention of that original idea of an independent hearing officer. That hearing would be scenographically recorded for the eventuality of it going to your board for a final administrative determination on that. And I just wanted to emphasize that during the appeal process, now as well as in the future, every effort is made to come to a resolution before it goes to the next level of appeal. And I believe with that, I would close by saying that our department is requesting your board's approval on the amended TOT ordinance, and I'm happy to take any questions at this time, and thank you very much.
County Council.
I just wanted to clarify one item within the appeal. The hearing officer decision would be final unless it is appealed to the Board of Supervisors. So, the difference here is it's not a recommendation from the hearing officer, but a separate appeal.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, Doug, thank you for the presentation. I believe we all received an email from Mr. Parson regarding this particular item, and he indicates that he believes that the commitment from staff, I think given a direction of the board to go back and continue to meet with the lodging providers in Tahoe was not met. I think I heard you say that you did have meetings after that with the lodging providers?
Well, we, just to review on our outreach efforts that we have had, we provided a copy of the ordinance to the Resort Association, the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, on September twenty-sixth. There was also a presentation made to their Board of Directors on October third, and then we had a open community meeting that was attended by operators and members of the Resort Association on October eleventh. And then, the next outreach effort that we made was on October twenty-third up in Tahoe at the board meeting where we sought public comment on that. So, that was our understanding that the update presentation on October twenty-third was where we were seeking more feedback from operators and the public.
But you have not had any meetings with the lodging community or the Resort Association since the Tahoe Board of Supervisors meeting?
That's correct.
Okay.
Aaron, can you come forward, please?
Good morning. Erin Casey with the County Executive Office. I did have the opportunity to present to the Resort Association's board in November. They had a meeting, I think it was on the third, their Board of Directors met, so I was able to provide an update to them on the meeting that transpired on the twenty-third, some of the themes that came out of that, and the revisions that were being made to the ordinance per the feedback from your board, as well as the community. So, the three areas that Doug has outlined for you were discussed with the Resort Association board, and from that meeting, the members spoke to me and were satisfied and felt that we had done a good job, at least in our outreach efforts at that point.
Okay, and my recollection is that the three issues that Doug talked about today were the only three issues that we raised as a board in October.
Right. And I'd also add that some of the other items that came out of the public meetings were really tied to clarification or the need to clarify where TOT would apply and where it would not apply, so different types of rates, if TOT would be applied, for example, to deposits or not. There seemed to be a little bit of confusion on that, and so we worked with Revenue Services to develop a, what's called a taxable items list. Mammoth Lakes also has one. They post it on their website so that you don't have to have every item in your ordinance. You can post it, make it available to operators. As things change or information needs to be updated, you update that document, and so we developed that and sent that both to the Resort Association as well as the participants who came to the public meeting to review, because that was really one of the areas that seemed to need further clarification, but the ordinance itself wasn't the tool to provide that clarification. There were other forms of communication that we discussed that would really help and aid in that.
Okay, thank you. And I know Mr. Parson is here, so I expect him to clarify some of his concerns within his letter.
Any other comments from board members before I open up the public? Seeing none? Thank you. We'll open up for public comment.
Okay.
Good morning. Chairman Holmes, supervisors, I'm Ron Parson. I operate property rental programs up at Lake Tahoe, HOA Management, Ski Area, a bunch of other little stuff, and I've been intimately involved in the TOT ordinance and its interpretations over the past couple of years. My only concern right now, first of all, I want to compliment the staff, or I think they've done a really good job up until today incorporating the concepts and making sure that we're working together to develop something that can positively support this huge economic engine of one-hundred-and-eighty million-plus dollars that are generated by the lodging property. It is clear that at the early October meeting, Mr. Jastro and Mr. Gamas told us, those of us who'd gotten together to provide input, that they would come back to us with the changes and say, "Here's what we've come up with. There are some issues with the ordinance that I think would benefit from a review by the community again." They're not big. I think most of this stuff is in pretty good shape, and I sent some examples to you. I don't know if they're right or wrong, but I do believe they merit some review. In the case of adding a requirement for every property that rents to have a TOT number, that was rejected during the rewrite of the current ordinance when it was adopted last time, and that was rejected by you all. That's back in it this time, and my concern on that specific item is that where I represent one TOT number, which is easily auditable, audit-able, yeah, and apparent for people to look at, now you've got one-hundred-and-twenty-nine of the properties that I represent who'd have to get new TOT numbers. I'm not sure if that's right or wrong. I can't tell you today whether it's right or wrong. I thought that was gone, the last rewrite. It was brought up during some negotiations I had, actually with Mr. Wertz at one point, and it was clear that that is not a current item in the ordinance. It hasn't come up for discussion. The lodging community, when we met in early October, said, "We're not sure why you want to do this. We don't know the benefit." I have operators who live in Africa. I represent them. They don't need to worry about it. One of the competitive benefits that I have is being able to tell them that, "You don't have to worry about any of that. I cover that under my TOT number. You're taken care of." It means that they can't participate in other programs that are competing with us, some of these online agents. So, I'm not sure that we don't lose a competitive advantage as an existing business. The process has worked for as long as I can remember, so I don't know the answer of whether it's right or wrong, but I do know it hasn't had the benefit of kind of being processed with the county staff, Mr. Jastro and his team, Erin, who did a great job getting this stuff out to us, and my time's up, so. There's other issues, just a number of little ones I think we need to look at that would benefit her. So, I suggest that you postpone this until the next Tahoe meeting, give us a chance to go through it.
Okay, thank you.
So, Doug, or I don't know, one or the other of you, it's my understanding that that actually is in the current ordinance.
Well, I will say this, that the vast majority of our operators do operate with that understanding, and it is in the ordinance, and it was my thought that, in my interpretation, County Council's interpretation, that that is something that is in the ordinance. There is obviously some differing opinions on that. What we were hoping to do with the ordinance update here was just make that plain for everyone, and Mr. Parson was talking about the competitive advantage on that, not to in any way negatively affect his business, but the idea with the ordinance was to have an even playing field on that, and since we have probably ninety-nine percent of our operators operating under a single assumption, that was our intent, was to clarify that so we would have that uniformity across the board.
Yeah, thank you, and I frankly don't see an issue with requiring a TOT certificate for each rental. I know people who live abroad, they live in the Far East, and they have TOT certificates, and so I'm not sure that living in Africa is any particular impediment to obtaining a TOT certificate. And TOT certificates are also free? Is that correct?
That is correct, and also available on our website. It's a single-page form.
And is that something that can be filled out online and just be returned online, or does that have to be printed, mailed in?
No, no, not at all. It can be completed online and sent electronically to the Revenue Services.
Okay.
Supervisor Montgomery, this is Brian Wertz. In addition, the operator can act on behalf of an individual owner to obtain that certificate. So, the owner doesn't have to do it as long as they authorize someone, you know, Mr. Parson's. If the owner in Africa doesn't or can't do that, Mr. Parsons can on their behalf.
And this approach is consistent with what I would characterize as the vast majority of the rest of the state does?
From our research, yes, absolutely. It's the industry standard on that. Also, we haven't brought this up yet, but for the administration of the TOT program, having individual certificates per parcel number is a great benefit for the department. Again, not to provide any kind of disincentive for business operators, but what we have by having individual certificates per property is the ability to better maintain properties when they perhaps move from one property management company to another, and we see that they're no longer reporting under that certificate number. We can reach out to the property owner and find out where that property is now being managed, if it's being managed by the owner or a different property management company, so we're able to maintain records of these individual certificates when they kind of are closed by. are closed by one property management company and reopened by another.
And having the TOT certificate tied to the individual parcel, we're going to call it?
Yes.
That actually allows us then to have some teeth in terms of collection on that individual owner rather than a property management company? Is that correct?
That is correct. What we are currently proposing with the ordinance is the ability to have some teeth to the ordinance when there is noncompliance on that. That would be in the form of the possibility of a real property lien. And in order to file that properly, there does need to be an individual parcel number attached with the certificate. So it enables us to do that.
Yeah. And I would just think, I mean, if it were me and I were renting, I mean, if I were a property manager and I weren't managing a bunch of properties, I think I would want the ultimate responsibility for that obligation to be upon the property owner and not residing in a single certificate within the property management company.
Mm-hmm.
I would think that that would actually make it cleaner for the property management companies. But I think those are all my questions for now.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Ullar?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Question, Todd. Given the number of emails that we've received within the last 24 hours questioning these exact kind of operational and implementation type of issues, that I would hope by now there would be more clarity, more certainty amongst the operator community. Is there any harm to the board continuing this to our next Tahoe meeting so that by the time we actually take action, the people that we are, number one, relying upon for actual implementation, and number two, potentially penalizing for incorrect operational implementation of this, might have greater certainty around this before we take action?
The answer is no. You, as a board, have the opportunity. I don't think operationally we have anything that is pressing from a time standpoint. Having said that, you know, I think the Revenue Services staff have kind of articulated, you know, clarification of what our code and ordinance, we're trying to clarify in this update. So it doesn't preclude you from pushing this out if you feel there needs to be some further dialogue. But at this point, you know, we've kind of outlined kind of what we've done in terms of community outreach and, but if we need to move that to a future date, we can do that as well.
And I appreciate the explanation provided to us today on, again, these operational implementation issues. But if we have this repeated theme coming, at least in the emails that I'm seeing, that are raising these questions, perhaps just a minute of what's pause and address the community directly up there, it'd be my preference, but...
And Supervisor Ullar, can you forward to the clerk of the board possibly those emails that you've received? I've only received one, and that was from Mr. Parsons. And so if there's a significant number of other folks who are continuing to have concerns about this, I think it's important that all the board members be aware of it?
Supervisor Grant?
Yeah, I'm assuming that we already have, as a county, have individual TOT numbers for these properties. So it's just an accounting issue for those operators that operate multiple, that manage multiple properties, right?
I would agree with that statement. That's true. It's, what it does is provide us the ability, when someone, the requirement when you have an open TOT certificate is when you are no longer renting on short-term basis, that you would close that certificate. We'd be aware of the fact that it's closed. If a property management company was no longer managing that company, they would close their certificate on that. And so, again, it does benefit, especially with the growing number of TOT certificates. I think we're close to 4,800 at this point, that the ability to manage all of those would be greatly benefited by having individual certificates.
And I would put together some guidance as far as why we're doing this, you know, a white sheet or something to let folks know why they're doing it, knowing how they can comply with it. If this is such a big, doesn't sound like it's a big deal, but there may be some, it sounds like there's some uncertainty as to how this is rolling out. And I would suggest that you put that in writing, put it on your website, just so folks can have that as a resource.
Absolutely.
But I'm okay with postponing this.
Supervisor?
Mr. Chair, there was, one of the points raised was the issue of collecting TOT on cancellations. Can you speak to that issue?
Well, what the current interpretation of the ordinance is, is that if there is a cancellation and the guest has the right to occupy the dwelling, then that would be a situation where what was paid for the room is something that would be taxable under the ordinance. If someone cancels and the operator is able to rent that dwelling out to someone else, that would negate the taxability of that payment. And if it was already paid, that tax would be refunded to the guest that canceled.
I think I need a flow chart for that.
Yeah.
If I think I understand what I'm hearing, you're saying, let's say, I go and I rent a room, and then I cancel within some time period, I'm no longer entitled to my full refund because it's too close to a cancellation.
Mm-hmm.
10% of whatever that amount is collected would go for TOT?
In that situation, if the operator was able to rent that room at that time because the cancellation...
Let's pretend they haven't rented the room. So I cancel and that room sits empty. I pay my $50 or half my room rate or whatever I agreed to when I booked that room initially. 10% of that then would be remitted as TOT to the county.
Yes.
Correct? So if you come in and you're like, all right, Jennifer canceled a room and you rented, I don't pay the TOT?
That's correct.
Nor do I pay my cancellation fee?
I believe that that would be up to the operator as far as the cancellation fee, but as far as the tax, that would not be your obligation at that point.
So in that situation, the operator could still collect their cancellation fee?
Correct.
But they would not have to remit the TOT?
Yes. That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
If I...
Supervisor Ullar?
It sounds awfully subjective and administratively very punitive if somebody has an interpretation that's different than what you just outlined here. Why would we not simply have clarity that says, somebody cancels, they're not going to be charged a TOT on a cancellation, since the whole purpose of TOT is to collect a special tax based on the impact that people are making when they're visiting so that we can provide amenities that address those impacts? I don't know why we would even think about this and send us down this road because that little diagram tree that you just painted where you just, in three different instances, said it's going to be subject to the operator's interpretation or they'll have the flexibility. I think that puts us in a very bad position. I think, again, to my previous comment, this is yet one more example of why this might need a little more time in the oven before it's completely baked.
Well, I'll add this, is that what Erin Casey was referencing before is a taxable list that we would maintain and through the feedback or the direction from County Council on that provide. So if there's any need for clarity, in that case, it would be something outside of the transient occupancy tax ordinance because it's something that would be looked at at a case-specific or operator-specific level. Where having these, the idea behind having the ordinance speaking to what's taxable and not taxable was in an effort not to be so inflexible that, say, your example, saying that the reason behind the TOT tax was to mitigate the impact of people coming up to unincorporated Placer County, that if that interpretation changes, we wouldn't need to necessarily update the ordinance, but we'd be able to make that administratively and report that to all the operators.
If I could jump in briefly, one of the changes that we are proposing in the ordinance is, in addition to the definition of tax administrator, which would authorize a tax administrator to issue guidance and clarification of these types of minor issues as they arrive because there's always going to be something new coming up, a new charge, a new type of, you know, package deal. The tax administrator would then be authorized to look it over, determine what is and what is not subject to TOT, and then would be required to make that determination available to all operators. So rather than having the ordinance get bogged down with this, with all these minor issues, is it roll-away bed, is it a mint-on-the-pillow, that sort of thing, subject to TOT, that would be handled administratively under the tax administrator's watch.
Which I appreciate on the one hand, but on the other hand, when you're creating an if-then scenario that requires at least three additional administrative steps on the half of the operator, like you charge a cancellation fee, you add a 10% surcharge, thereby creating potentially tremendous customer dissatisfaction because if I'm being charged 10%, and I never even impacted your area, I'm really not going to be happy. And I collect that, and now I'm going to go remit that 10% that I charged on the cancellation fee. But then, thanks to any number of internet sites that now know that that capacity is available, I rent that out and I'm charging TOT to that person. Now I have to remember that this got charged over here. I have to remit that back to the taxpayer who paid that 10% on that cancellation charge. And now I have to adjust my roles so that you guys don't think that I am short-paying this, so I have to demonstrate that this was collected as a result of a cancellation, not an actual stay. It's just the number of steps that you're placing on the operators for something so silly as, somebody canceled, they're not coming. This is, again, one of these things where the intent of this should be, or the purpose of this should be, to provide as much clarity and lack of subjectivity, even if it means from time to time going against the wishes of the operator. At least we have clarity and a lack of subjectivity and fewer steps in the process as opposed to what we're describing around this one issue.
And Supervisor Ullar, I agree with you completely. And I would suggest that our board, you know, in order to continue moving this forward, would say, let's adopt these revisions, but let's say, no, you don't collect TOT on cancellations. And that just puts the entire set of parameters and hoops that you just brought forward to rest. And then it's really up to the benefit of the operator to make sure that that room does get rented out, in which point they legitimately collect the TOT. So I would imagine that those TOT amounts generated by cancellations are probably relatively insignificant to the rest of the TOT. And I would, again, suggest that in order to move this along, because I will say, the longer that we wait to do this, the less revenue, frankly, that we're going to be collecting appropriately as a county when we look at those, you know, 300 online platforms that exist out there now. I think it's incumbent upon us to actually take some action on this today. And I would suggest we take the action that's in front of us with the change that you've proposed, which is without excluding from that any collection of TOT on cancellations.
Just as a point of procedure, if you want to change the ordinance that's in front of you for introduction, you're going to have to continue this and reintroduce it with that proposed revision.
The other option could be to provide policy guidance to revenue, to the tax administrator to issue guidance on that particular point if the ordinance is adopted as it currently is. That would be then handled administratively upon policy direction by your board.
But it only gets to tax administrator? It only gets to tax administrator if something bad has happened, right?
I'm sorry?
It only gets to the tax administrator if something bad has happened along the way. If there's an interpretation that says that you didn't collect this, as opposed to it being very clear in our language, it says, we don't want to, we don't care about it.
How about, Kirk, we add it to that list of things which are excluded from TOT collection?
That's, yeah, that's what I was trying to say. Thank you.
Okay.
I speak English. He doesn't. He's a lawyer.
He speaks lawyer.
Does that address council's concern, then?
I'm not sure. Where were you going to add it?
So as I understand it, Doug, there's going to be a list that says, these things are subject to TOT, these things are not subject to TOT, so that there's some clarity for the operators.
Correct.
So the opportunity would exist to put cancellations specifically in the list of things which do not trigger TOT collection.
Yeah, that does. If we're not changing the ordinance that's currently introduced, that's fine. We can proceed.
Okay.
Supervisor Grant, did you...
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody, we just kind of went through this exercise with Groundelbacher on, you know, just the myriad different interpretations of stuff. And, you know, anytime you leave anything open to suggestion or recommendation, that's the, you get into all kinds of trouble. So I think we need to list and enumerate as many things as possible as either being taxable or non-taxable so we can narrow that scope of areas of where there is any debate or, you know, because depending on who you're talking to, you know, it's going to go one way or the other. And, you know, the one goal here, I think, is we're trying to keep everybody in the compliance. We don't want to be the IRS, you know? You know, it was just mind-blowing how, you know, Groundelbacher ended up and, you know, how long it took and how much it cost everybody in staff time and attorney time to get done. And we're not set up for that. You know, that's not, that's not what we do, you know? So whatever we can do to keep it clear and concise and limit those opportunities to where we fall in a trap, you know, I'm all for it.
And I think that's what this ordinance update intends to do.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none? What is the pleasure of the board?
I would move approval of the ordinance.
With the proposed direction regarding the...
With the proposed direction, yes.
Well, second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance with the proposed change?
Direction.
Direction. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item is moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. So now I can go to the 10:45 timed item. Thank you. Am I doing okay? This is Placer Gold Industrial Park, Phase 1. We're asked to conduct a public hearing, consider all protests, and tabulate ballots. And this is approved by Michelle Kingsbury.
Hi. Good morning, members of the board. Michelle Kingsbury with the County Executive Office, here with Leslie Amesbury from Engineering Surveying, as well as Bob Costa from Department of Public Works and Facilities. This is a combined item to go forward with several actions related to the approval of Placer Gold Industrial Park, Phase 1 subdivision map. The first action before you is to conduct a public hearing, consider all protests, and tabulate the ballots to annex Phase 1, which is four lots, into the Placer County Fire and Emergency Services, CFD number 2002-1. The second action that you'll be requested to go forward today is to establish Zona Benefit Number 222 and County Service Area Number 28 to fund the maintenance costs for streetlighting, road maintenance, and storm drainage within the extension of Cincinnati Avenue for this project. Both of these actions are necessary to proceed forward with the final action, which is to approve the Phase 1 subdivision map. For those that aren't aware, Placer Gold Industrial Park is located in the Sunset Industrial area on Cincinnati Avenue. The subdivision was approved to create nine industrial lots. Phase 1 creates four lots and a drainage lot on 15.8 acres. With that, if your board has any questions, otherwise we can proceed forward with these actions today.
Any questions from board members? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public which to address the board on Item 5A and B? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Oh, we need to consider all protests and tabulate ballots. Will the clerk be kind enough to do that?
One ballot in favor of.
Okay. That's good.
Demand a recount?
We're not Florida.
Is there a motion to proceed?
I move approval to create the Fire Emergency Services Committee to the Lake District as discussed.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to adopt a resolution to annex a portion of the assessed parcel numbers identified in the staff report. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstention? Hearing none, we'll move to all County Service Area 28's Zona Benefit Number 222. And this is a conductive public hearing, consider all protests and tabulate... this is to conduct a public hearing, consider all protests, and tabulate ballots. Any comments from the board? I'll open up the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to address this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to consider all protests and tabulate ballots.
One ballot received, in favor.
All right. What is the pleasure of the board?
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve Item 5C and D. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Now we'll move to Item E, the Final Subdivision Act, Placer Gold Industrial Park Phase One.
Chairman, I'm looking to authorize you to sign the Industrial Park Phase One Final Map, Consideration of Agreement, Approve the Reclamation of Final Map.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the item is moved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for kind of patience. With me. Okay, now we'll move to Item 8A, Placer County Conservation Program Planning Agreement with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Mr. Greg McKenzie. Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, lady and gentlemen. Greg McKenzie, or Placer County Conservation Program Administrator, here this morning with the Third Amendment to the Planning Agreement for the Placer County Conservation Program, originally signed back in 2001, updated in 2012, again in 2015. Here we are with the Third Amendment requesting a one-year extension to this agreement with the chairman's authorization to sign it. I'm here to answer any questions. I can provide you with an update on the PCP if you would like one, but that will be the long and the short of my report this morning.
Okay, fine. Any questions from board members? I see none. Anyone in the audience wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of the board? I heard a move. Start second. Moved and seconded to approve the item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll now move to, thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Now we'll move to Item 9A, School-Based Wellness Services Contract with Placer County Office of Education. Dr. Abertson.
Good morning, Chair Holmes, board members, Ms. Schwab, Mr. Leopold, Twyla Abrahamson with the Children's System of Care, and I'm pleased to be here today presenting this item. So, a little bit of history. On June 5th of this year, your board approved three revenue agreements with the Mental Health Oversight and Accountability Commission, the OAC, for delivery of crisis triage services, which were then amended by the OAC, and you approved again in a lesser amount last month at your October 23rd, 2018 Board Assuit Meeting. These three grants were awarded to support and expand the existing Adult Mobile Crisis Team, to create a Child and Family Mobile Crisis Team, and to partner with the Placer County Office of Education in Roseville School Districts to be one of four counties in the state to create a school-county collaborative to deliver mental health services. The latter grant funding will be used to contract with Placer County Office of Ed or PCOE for school wellness centers. The wellness centers are a place where students should feel free to come and get support for healthy interactions with peers, teachers, and family members. They are also intended to become a mental health resource and provider site where students and families can access prevention, early intervention, intensive, and crisis mental health services, and referrals. PCOE will hire school-based mental health staff to provide a continuum of integrated mental health services in six schools, serving students in transitional kindergarten through grade 12 in Roseville City School District and the Roseville Joint Union High School District. Staffing will include school social workers at each site, family and youth liaisons to work at each school site, one project coordinator, and one clinical supervisor. These staff will lead each wellness center project to provide onsite clinical intervention and prevention services, such as individual and group counseling and other interventions. We are requesting that your board take the following action. Approve a contract with Placer County Office of Ed for the school-based wellness centers from December 1st, 2018 through November 30th, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $5,107,214. Authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the contract, and to sign any subsequent amendments not to exceed $100,000, consistent with the subject matter and scope, and with risk management and county council concurrence. This agreement is 100% funded through a grant from the OAC. The amount of $1,223,155 for fiscal year 2018-19 is included in the department's fiscal year 2018-19 final budget. Additionally, funds for subsequent fiscal years will be included in the department's future budgets for each of these respective years. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any board member comments or questions? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back forward for action. It's been moved and seconded to approve Item 9A. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you in a minute. Pardon? What is it? Oh, sure. Yeah, I was thinking about that, so, okay.
Actually, I think we're going to have one of our new managers from the Adult System of Care present this item. I'll just be back out.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, now we're moving to Item C.
Oh, moving to Item B.
Who's running this meeting?
Do you like us to move forward with B?
Yes, we're going to move forward with B, apparently.
Chair and Board of Supervisors, I'm Amanda Sharp. I'm the Human Services Director for the Health and Human Services Department at Placer County, and I'm coming today to request that you authorize the Director of HHS to sign the 2018-19 Fiscal Year Housing Support Program allocation, and I'm requesting further an authorization of an amended contract signature with our partner Advocates for Mentally Ill Housing, AMI, to increase their contract amount and meet additional goals, serving an expanded population within the CalWorks program for these services. I'm joined today by Greg Geisler, who is the Program Manager for our award-winning CalWorks Employment Services and CalWorks programs within Human Services. And once I've gone through the basics here, if you have additional questions, we can direct them to Greg. Additional funds for this program were granted following a proposal and application to the state with new and innovative components added to this program. Resulting outcomes are expected to increase the number of families housed by July 2019 and provide incentives to landlords serving our customers. Participants are expected to contribute to their housing costs as part of this program. In the several years we've administered a housing support program known statewide as HSP through CalWorks, Placer Human Services not just met but often exceeded the benchmarks that are set by the state and achieved or surpassed all of our goals. Along with some of the incentives and innovations were added to this current application, our desire to serve an expanded population, we believe that the success rates for the program are really the reason why we've been granted additional funds beyond what we had expected under the current contract. Program requirements include achieving goals for the numbers housed, adhering to Housing First Guidelines, which are now part of the Welfare Institution Code, and completing a 14-month report. And no general fund money is being requested as part of this. This is additional funds which we would be receiving from the state. It is time-sensitive, and that's why we're coming today for amendments to the existing contract. If you have any other questions about the service or how it works, I'm open to questions or open it to Greg.
All righty. Any board member comments or questions? I see none. Anyone in the audience wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for. It's moved and seconded to approve Items 8, B, 1, and 2. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Thank you. Now we'll move to Item C.
Thank you.
And this is Drug-Medical-Organized Delivery System.
Good morning, Chairman Holtz, members of the board. My name is Nicole Ebry Munukin. I'm a new program manager in the Adult System of Care overseeing Substance Use Treatment Services and Mental Health Services. And I'm here today to announce that Placer County is now officially, as of November 1st, under contract to provide Drug-Medical-Organized Delivery Services, Expanded Substance Use Treatment Services. Amy Alice and I plan to do a more in-depth presentation to the board the next time when we come back with more expanded or changes of services, and we'll talk more about early outcomes and trends with this service system. The two contracts that are coming forward today are the beginning of offering expanded services. These updated agreements now include additional services such as case management and the ability to bill and receive federal funding for residential treatment. We hope to continue to expand providers and services with the new federal funding source, which will mean additional opportunities to discuss these changes with your board in the near future. Today I have the following items, action items to request, to approve the following agreements for Substance Use Treatment Services from November 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020, and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign subsequent amendments up to $100,000, consistent with each agreement's current subject matter and scope of work. First, it's Community Recovery Resources, CORE, in an amount to not exceed $8,459,010. And second, Progress House, in an amount not to exceed $3,39,590. The aggregate two-year amount for these agreements is $11,498,600. Funding for these mandated services is comprised of 90% federal and state funding sources and 10% required county general fund match. Of these amounts, half is included in the fiscal year 1819 fiscal budget, and the remainder will be included in the department's fiscal year 1920 requested budget. Thank you very much, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions, comments from board members? I see none. Anyone in the audience wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for approval. It's been moved and seconded to approve Item 9, no, yeah, 9C, Drug-Medical-Organized Delivery System. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the item is moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move to Item 10, Public Works and Facilities, Placer County Auburn Jail retrofit, Placer County Government Center. Mr. Unholson.
Good morning, Chair Holmes, members of the board. This morning, we're requesting your board approve plans and specifications for the Auburn Jail retrofit project located on Richardson Drive in Auburn, with an estimated construction cost of $3.1, $3,126,626, I'm sorry, and authorized staff to solicit bid. This project's included in the Public Works and Facilities fiscal year 2018-19 final capital projects budget with, in an amount anticipating a $3.3 million total project cost. Our consultant, Leonakis, began preparing final design and construction documents in the fall of 2017. These improvements will occur in all four of the existing pods located in Housing Unit 3 of the Auburn Jail. The project consists of site improvements, including addition of an exterior door, Sallyport, secured walkway to an existing loading dock, accessibility improvements to restrooms and day rooms, additional security cameras, new flooring and paint, new furnishings, and secured officer stations separate from the day rooms. The project also, the project provides medium security, male and female inmate housing with classroom and program support space. The construction budget for this project was originally based on the 50% construction estimate in the amount of $2.5 million. The most recent construction cost estimate, based on the 100% construction documents, was received subsequent to the agenda approval process of the item that your board heard on this issue from the Sheriff's Department in the previous board meeting. The 100% construction documents, construction estimate is $3.1 million. This estimate is likely a reflection of an extremely active and volatile construction market and a more conservative approach by our cost estimating consultants. It's reasonable to expect that any project that was estimated a year or more ago will experience similar escalation based on the current market conditions. Staff will return to your board at a word of bid with the appropriate budget revision and is currently evaluating possible cost-saving options. In order to proceed with this project and establish the true cost of construction, it's requested that your board approve plans and specifications and authorize staff to solicit bids. The estimated total project, based on the 100% construction estimate, is $3.9 million, including $3.1 for construction and $800,000 for project management, force account, design, and contingencies. Again, this project was originally budgeted in the amount of $3.3 million and is included in the Department of Public Works and Facilities 1819 final budget capital and project, capital projects fund. Be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you. Rob, you and I communicated on this a little bit yesterday, and you will not be surprised to hear that I'm not willing to support anything in addition to what we approved two weeks ago. And while I agree with you 100% that estimates from a year ago are no longer really in the ballpark, two weeks ago, we were given a number, and we're told that that was going to be sufficient to move this project forward. And so, my position on this is, we need to figure out a project that will come in at that 3.3 that we talked about two weeks ago.
Any other comments, board members? Supervisor Grant.
Yeah, when, okay, so, I just want to get the sequencing of this correct. So, what we were told a couple of months ago, when was that data solidified?
The, well, two weeks ago.
Okay, so what's happened in between two weeks ago and now?
We received the 100% cost estimate, and we're in review of that estimate, and in fact, it came in at over $3.3 million, and we were able to find errors and items that reduced that to 3.1.
Were we told two weeks ago that it was based, and I can't recall, that the price that you were giving us was based on 50% construction documents?
I don't believe you were, as that item was addressing numbers of beds in the pods.
Right, and that's why I asked you that.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that that's on the record.
It was kind of on a different item.
Right, right. Okay, so we're talking a $600,000 swing?
In an estimate.
In an estimate, okay.
And again, you know, we don't know, we've got a lot of dynamics going on here. The market's unpredictable at best, and very volatile and active, and we've got the cost estimating community out there going, gee, I need to cover my tail and be conservative on these costs.
No, I understand that. I mean, I've done quite a bit of construction projects, but 50% to 100%, I'd be more concerned if it was a 10% swing, you know, if we weren't talking 50%. You know, if we were talking a smaller, you know, closer to 100% documents, and then we've got a $600,000 goof, I'd be a little bit more concerned about that. So, I would hope, and I would expect, and I know that you guys are going to be drilling down on whatever value engineering that you can in order to make it come down to this lower number.
We are looking at all of our options. Housing Unit 3, as with most of our jail housing units, are not. Opulent.
So, I just want to make sure that this number, this change in price, isn't going for additional beds.
No.
Isn't going for anything that we have not already approved, that we've been very clear with the Sheriff's Office that this was a special, you know, a special situation where we were going to up the number of beds based on what the original plan was going to be. This isn't going for anything outside of that scope that we approved previously.
This is for very basic improvements.
Okay, all right. All right.
There are not a lot of whistles. There are no whistles and bells on this.
Any other comments from board members? Seeing none, anyone in the audience wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for approval.
Move this for approval, based on the fact of the representations that you're making to me, that we weren't aware that you were only basing that you're making to me, that we weren't aware that you were only basing that estimate off of 50% construction documents as opposed to 100% construction documents.
If I might address that, Mr. Chair, that's actually my exact concern. I think two weeks ago, we were presented with something that we should probably not have yet been presented with until we had had more completed design so that we could have made an informed decision about the implications of the decision two weeks ago.
Supervisor Wygant.
And I'll just, 20% increase is not a small thing, but I appreciate the fact that you're not in control of the market, Rob, and I don't, I'm not blaming you or Director. I just want to reiterate my position that we continue to work together to not maximize the number of beds we have in the jail alone as compared to having a comprehensive program that looks at managing that inmate population most efficiently as possible in every way.
And we continue to work with the sheriff on that management and try to come up with designs that'll give us the most efficient way to do it, based on, you know, what they're trying to accomplish with fewer beds than more. And this does provide the number of beds that your board discussed with the sheriff two weeks ago.
I guess I'd just add that, you know, I want to do that in partnership with all of the collaboration that reflects that component of our public protection.
Once we get the bids in, we're going to sit down and look at them, and based on what that number is, come up with some strategies and be back to your board to present what our options might be.
Supervisor Wygant.
Yeah, I seconded it, but I want to blame Rob anyway. Because, you know.
There you go. I don't want you to be out there all by yourself.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the item. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? The item is moved. Thank you, Ms. Unholson.
Thank you.
We'll now move to item, where are we, 9B, Gold Hill, Auburn Ravine Bridge Replacement Project.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Still morning. Matt Randall with the Department of Public Works and Facilities, Senior Engineer with a bridge contract for you to consider. So, we're asking for you to adopt a resolution awarding contract number 983 to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Bridgeway Civil Constructors of Vacaville, California, for the construction of the Gold Hill Road over Auburn Ravine Bridge Replacement Project in the amount of $2,875,679, and authorizing the Director of Public Works and Facilities or designated to execute contract change orders up to $156,283. And this project is in our current fiscal year budget and 100% funded with the Federal Highway Bridge Program. So, a couple of notes about the project. This is a bridge that's nearly 90 years old. It's very narrow, is deteriorating, and needs to be replaced, and so this contract would build a new bridge on nearly the same alignment to current standards. Your board authorized the department to advertise for bids on August 14th. We opened four bids on October 24th, and Bridgeway was the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. We didn't receive any bid protests, and so Public Works and Facilities, along with procurement jointly, is asking you to approve this contract. So, a couple of notes about construction. If you award the contract, construction would begin this winter, and the contractor would do some kind of pre-construction environmental work, but the plan is that they, or we're anticipating that they would want to close the road in April, like mid-April, and it would be closed through November. We've been to the MAC several times. Gene Hansen went in October to the latest one to present the project, and just to make sure, it was an informational item, just to make sure everyone knew that it was coming. We've started to do some utility relocation and tree removal already, and to the best of our abilities, I think we've addressed all of our constituents' concerns. So, with that, just open it up to any questions.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Matt, I'm assuming this is at 100% design?
It's, yeah, it's complete. Design certified by Caltrans, yes.
Get Unholson back in here, we've got to blame somebody.
Yes.
No, that's okay.
So, in the future, I would just like, whenever we're having these presentations brought forward to us, that we are informed transparently at the level percentage of design, so that we don't have these kind of miscommunications.
Right, no, I understand.
As in our last agenda item, and I'm sorry, I'm poking fun at you. I know this, is it 100% design?
No.
Because it's gone out to bid.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
Supervisor Wygant.
Just want to change up a little bit and say, I love all these old bridges, and I hate to see them leave, but I'm going to support it anyway because I get the fact that I'm just an old guy who hates to see all this change.
I know, they're good bridges, but yeah, need to be replaced, too.
So, I heard Supervisor Wygant's handprints are in the concrete foundation of this bridge.
We could arrange that.
No, the one that's being.
Oh, the other one. Oh, really? I didn't know that. Gotcha.
That 90-year-old bridge you're tearing out?
Ah, okay.
Supervisor Duran.
Yeah, I was just curious, you know, when we replaced the Cook Riola Bridge in District 1, they were able to keep some of the architecture and design and actually some of the things. Were you able to, did you have the community kind of look at what they could do to kind of keep the flavor of the former bridge?
Right. Well, we did make an effort to do it. You know, the old bridge is an arch, and so the new bridge that we're building is a reinforced concrete bridge, too, and we put a little bit of a, it's a spiced-up version of a Caltrans bridge, but we have a parabolic arch underneath, like the soffit is shaped, and then we have some other architectural treatments on the rails and the sides as well that we presented to the community. I think we were trying to, kind of like the bridge we did on Wise Road, I think, last year, where it's.
Oh, in front of my house.
Yeah, it's real similar to that, where we have some architectural treatment bricks, things like that.
And actually, the one, they did a really nice job on the one in front of my house.
Are there handprints on that one, too?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to thank staff for their work on this, and particularly Gene Hansen. She did a tremendous job working with the community, and we actually got a nice letter from one of the people that was, one of the complaints about what a wonderful job, and he's satisfied with your work, so I really appreciate that.
That's good.
So, now, I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve this item.
Summon.
It's moved in second to approve item 10B, Gold Hill Road over Auburn Ravine Bridge Replacement Project. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? The item is moved. Thank you so much. And now, we'll move to item 11, County Executive Update Strategic Planning Work Plan. Mr. Leopold.
Thank you, Chairman. What I want to do is give you a quick update of kind of where we're at with just some of the strategic planning work. We want to do, talk about kind of what we've done over the last couple of months and kind of the efforts here and kind of the foundation we've put forward for not only the remainder of this year, but going into the new year. So, just to, as a quick recap, back in April, we had a workshop. We were able to spend some time really talking about what we wanted to focus on for the organization going forward, included both elected officials, department directors, in that discussion, and I thought it was actually really, a really good building block for us to move forward on. Subsequent to that, we asked department directors and elected officials to take those nine different items, and I'll touch on these in a second, to give you recommendations about descriptions and clarification of what we mean by each of these nine different areas, as well as measures of success. How do we measure that we're moving forward in each of these specific areas? So, June through October of this year, different subcommittees met together, some multiple meetings to really hash through this and kind of clarify it, but in concert with departments and elected officials working collaboratively together on each of these items. Today's the follow-up to that. I'll talk to this, as well as the work plan and what that means as it correlates to the strategic planning work we've done. So, we identified nine different critical success factors, strategic relationships, community engagement being one of them, diversity of housing, collaborative health and human services, public service infrastructure, public serving infrastructure, outcome-focused economic development strategies, prudent all-inclusive financial planning, comprehensive public safety services, innovative implementation-focused integrated county services, and finally, land use planning and environmental stewardship. These were the nine areas that you identified back in April of 2018. So, what I'm, I'm going to walk through these. I don't need to read through each one of them, but what we've identified, I wanted to show you, we've done definitional descriptions from each of the subcommittees on each of these nine areas to kind of clarify what we mean when we talk about these specific areas. In addition, there were success measures, performance measures are identified in each of these nine different areas. From two to nine different measures were identified in each of these specific areas, some more, some less. Personally, I think it's an iterative process, so we're going to continually refine these over time. All these measures are ones that we currently either have data for or can attain relatively easily. My intent here is just have a baseline foundation of kind of where we stand in each of these areas. The conversation's coming the next fiscal year, and honestly, the next calendar year, I should say, is going to be tied to understanding, where do we want to move as an organization and focus on, you know, we know what the baseline data is, where would we like to be in a timeframe for that, and that'll kind of frame up initiatives that we can do to kind of move the needle in some of these specific areas. So, I'm touching base and kind of walking through these different things, but I'll share with you, I thought the elected officials, our department directors, had a really good, thorough kind of organization-wide viewpoint on each of these areas, and we, as a CEO's office, kind of framed up a couple of these and added a little more clarity. Public safety represent the largest number of measures, but are really, are around some inputs, but also a lot about efficiency measures, and that's where we really want to go to moving forward. Again, the last two items, same sort of effort that's taking place. What I want to do is touch on the second piece of this, because this is a conversation I kind of talked to you all about, but this is kind of the initial rollout. When I look at a strategic plan, it's kind of your overarching umbrella as the organization. The work plan, as I'm entitling, is really the tactical elements, kind of for the operational initiatives that go to support that. Where you see here, and this is kind of a small reading here, so I'm not going to touch on, except for graphically, what you're going to be seeing in the future, is a work plan, and it's represented in the documents you have, but, and there's actually six, nine different categories, eight different categories, that you will see on a quarterly basis. My intent is myself, staff will be updating you quarterly. Some of these initiatives are taking place currently in each of these areas, but there's going to be nine different basically worksheets, the objective being the action item, the thing that we're working on, the action itself, what does that mean, what are we looking at and accomplishing. There's a couple of areas in each of these areas, in terms of columns, that are blank at this point. We're going to be filling in the information. Benchmarks, we want to, in some of the initiatives that we have outlined, we're going to want to put what success measures may be for those, so we'll be incorporating that. We initially have identified the individual department that these, each of these items are assigned to, so they'll be accountable to that. We have some vacant information right now, and we're also going to be talking, putting staff assigned to that, so we're going to actually drill down into the actual staff person. We have some general implementation timeframes for each of these, so I've asked our departments and our staff to identify when you anticipate completion of these items. Obviously, things change and evolve over time, but we wanted to put some timeframes that you can have some expectations on. The next two items are cost staff, cost and staffing, so if we have cost from an appropriation standpoint, we'll be plugging that into the information, as well as if there's any staffing requirements that are needed for that specific initiative, kind of the timeframe for that. And then finally, the column farthest to the right will be a status, so that will be updates on a quarterly basis for each of these specific items, whether we're on task or not, budgetarily, as well as just the staffing resources that are assigned to it. So, the work plan's obviously an additional document. We'll be looking at this as we have new initiatives, new ideas that come about through the course of the year, we'll be including those. I'll be coming back to you and asking whether you want to continue to move forward with some of these initiatives, if we want to make some changes based on either financial constraints or staffing constraints, or you want to require additional appropriation authority. This obviously is not indicative of all the initiatives that we have going on in the organization, but they are areas of focus on an organization-wide basis that I think collectively felt were important for you this year. So, these two working, the strategic plan, the work plan, are, coincide with one another. Ultimately, we're going to be cascading down the accountability aspect to performance measures for each of the individual departments and department directors about completion of these specific items. So, our intent is to do a lot of communication. So, two areas will be within the organization as a whole. There's going to be a number of employee meetings throughout the organizations. We're going to, my intent is myself going out and talking to folks. We're also going to have our executive staff as well, and we're going to talk to each of these areas, not only the strategic plan, but the purpose of the work plan and how that coincides with kind of the organization moving forward. And we're also going to be doing that from a community standpoint, so we're going to be looking at various aspects to reach out to the community. Two items I wanted to share with you are, how do we get messaging out? So, we have two items, one's in basically two different formats. One's a document that's going to be presented and provided to you all. It's, or it basically highlights the nine different key critical success factors, what we've done to date, so that's a document that we're going to have, as well as strategic initiatives assigned with that. And then the other item is a fourfold that our graphic design folks have worked on. I'll be getting this to each of you. This is a good, probably a good communication piece for our citizens, as well as information will be on the website. My intent is to have it under the Board of County Supervisors so that people can easily refer back to it. So, barring any adjustments or thoughts about this, our intent is to move forward. I think it's a good foundational building block, one that we spent some, I think, a fair amount of time on and one to kind of build off of. I foresee this being a good discussion point for us when we get into budget for the coming fiscal year as well, utilizing these, kind of this foundation to kind of work from. So, I'll leave it at, any questions you might have?
Any questions from board members, from Mr. Leopold? Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, Todd, thank you for the update on this. I like generally the direction that we're going with this. I will just share with you and with the board that I have heard from a number of department heads, that they are concerned that some of what is in the document is either inconsistent with or in conflict with their missions, and so I would suggest that part of this continuing process is to reach back out to, I would suggest probably all the department heads, just to say, are we getting, are we getting it right here? Is this consistent with what you do, or is it in conflict with some of what you do? And I know that's probably an added step, but I think it's important that we try to move this forward and get it right and not create any inadvertent conflicts for ourselves through this process.
Okay. Supervisor Yular.
Yeah, Jennifer, I encourage you to also reach back out to those department heads and tell them, so Todd doesn't have to play guess, you know, the department head, tell them that they need to reach out to him. I'm a big fan of moving this direction. I think when you reduce these things to writing like this, put it on a page, assign dates and kind of what tasks are, it's really, it's accountability driver. And as we move forward with the various status updates, it'll be fun to chart the progress and see where we are making progress and perhaps in those areas where it might be lagging a little bit, be able to understand why. So, I'm very pleased that we're moving forward in this direction.
Supervisor Wygant.
Just, so reiterate comments of my colleagues and just put my support and energy behind it. I like the numerical measurable outcome base, kind of to the extent that that stuff is never perfect, but coming from a finance guy, but it's better by far than not doing it all, so. But one thing that struck me was.
Me?
Well, kind of. Kirk eloquently earlier today complimented our Department of Health and Human Services, and so in my sort of more simple words, I'd say that they're like way above average for Departments of HHS throughout the country, in my personal opinion. So, I was kind of, you know, so if you have a department that's functioning usually well, I as compared to how all of our departments are, is it inherent that, I wouldn't want to sort of penalize them, for example, by saying they're already up here and then kind of have some excessive criticism of our departments that I'll keep quiet, but can personally think of that I think could use some operational improvements. So is that factored into that much? I know you've thought about it, but is it inherent in this system?
Yeah, you know, I think, I think that's a good question and a good comment. I will say, many of these departments do very well in, in a number of different areas and it's, I, I will, you know, I've tried to convey this and I, obviously I think your point's well taken, that this is not a penalization program. These measures aren't used from a penal of, penalization standpoint. There's improvement and process improvement and some is just identifying, you know, how, how we can do continuous improvement. So where we're doing really well, honestly, we need to support that and embrace that and, and how do we encourage those efforts? And in the same breath, identify areas where we want to make some improvements. That's why I'm saying, I, I think this is a good foundation. I don't think it's, it's, we, you know, comes down from the mountain and we never look at it again. I, my intent is, this is a continually evolving thing in areas where you want to do more measurement and more clarification. I think this is where we can have that dialogue and we can build it into, into the overall planning document as a whole.
And I think Robert just sort of expressed better than I did the general angst that I've heard from a couple of the department heads about, you know, they consider themselves extremely high performing already and how do you sort of meet a metric if you're already meeting a metric?
Correct. Fair enough.
Supervisor Duran.
Yeah, I was going to just comment that these are all things that we discussed as a board under different leadership that we thought, I think, were going to be heading down the road that never came to fruition. So I think it's a good thing that we're, that we're going, that we're continuing that, that direction that we previously pointed to. But I think for the most part, you know, when you're dealing in a public environment and you're dealing with the public's money, there's an expectation that there are measurements. And, you know, I can tell, anybody that says that they're already high performing, I can guarantee that you can get more out of them. That's just somebody who's been in the private sector for a, a long time. And that tells me something about them intuitively. There's, there's not, there's not a doubt in my mind that they are high performing, but maybe under their own version of what high performing is. But when you add different conditions to try to, to measure that, you know, some things could change. But I do think that it's our obligation to not only say that we can do better, but actually show the public how we have done better with things that they can understand.
All right. Good job.
All right. Thank you.
Now we're going to go to closed session.
Board will now move to closed session to consider one item of existing litigation, one anticipated litigation matter, conference with labor negotiators, and one public employee performance evaluation.
Okay.
Okay. The board meant in closed session to consider four items. First, existing litigation. In AT versus Dry Creek Joint Elementary School, the board received a report and provided direction. Anticipated litigation, the board gave direction to initiate litigation. On conference with labor negotiations, the board heard a report and gave direction. On public employee performance evaluation, the evaluation took place. That concludes closed session.
That concludes our meeting.